Are we not having a lawyer tonight?
Say what?
So who sent that? Was it, um, you said that, um, the link?
Jeremy sent the wa- the link.
I don't have it. Maybe it went to somewhere else.
Jeremy forwarded it to you?
Yeah.
He sent it at eleven fifteen AM. Today.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Okay.
How are you?
Hanging in there.
Hi. Michelle? David? Howl? I wasn't, I wasn't in Howl, so. It was Ola where I was at.
So you're forwarding that to me?
Yeah, I did. I sent it.
Uh, Chile and Peru. And I got sick, really sick in Peru. Altitude sickness. Cusco's eleven thousand five hundred, but Puno, Lake Titicuac, is fifteen thousand.
Dan, do you want me to start or wait?
Yeah, go ahead.
Calling to order, Parawan City Council meeting for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It is six o'clock PM. Thank you to everyone who's here tonight. We appreciate you coming and learning more about the business of our city and being part of these conversations and decisions. Um, we'll start the evening with opening ceremony by Councilmember Topham. She's going to give us an opening prayer and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to come together today as a city council and as a town to discuss the business of the city. Please have the Spirit to be with us, to guide us and direct us to make the best decisions that we can for the city and for this great place that we live in. We are so very grateful for the beauty in which surrounds us and please bless that uh, we can all enjoy each other and in peace and safety. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Can you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under us, indivisible, indivisible and eternal.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, um, conflicts of personal? Oh, we need to excuse Councilman Gail. He is with his family this evening. Um, do we have any conflicts or personal interests to be, to be declared by any of our city council members?
No, Mayor.
No.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Okay. And next is approval of the meeting's agenda tonight.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving now into public comment, this time is set apart for you to express your ideas, your comments and concerns, and we will limit those comments to two minutes per person.
Don't close it all the way, just down a ways. Sorry.
That's okay.
We need it and just.
I'll look at it from a distance. I would like to say congratulations to the mayor, city council and city manager for their commitment to the community to reopen the Parawan pool. The renovation and new amenities are very inviting and a great asset to the community. Additionally, the efforts put forth to be sure the pool opened on July fourth is nothing short of miraculous. Let us look back at the Parawan City Council meeting of February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. At that meeting, the former city manager expressed to the council the amount of work and maintenance needed to open the city pool for the upcoming season. Councilman Burton was extremely vocal in promoting the building of a new pool, indicating, and I quote, "They will find more forgiveness from the citizens if they know that the pool is closed because the city is working towards building a new pool." He said, "It is a time to build a new pool," end quote. Without hesitation, there was a vote taken by a motion set forth by Councilman Burton to close the pool. All but one of the council members voted in the affirmative. That may vote was from Councilman Gail. Closing the pool was a knee-jerk reaction to what we now know wasn't a complicated or impossible repair. This terrible decision had the community divided and very upset. The community wasn't even given the opportunity to comment on what would be in the best interest of the community as a whole. In two thousand twenty-two, several public meetings were held and the consensus of those who attended those meetings was that Parawan could not afford a pool of the magnitude that was being proposed. After several public hearings with the same consensus, the city continued to pursue the agenda and spent upwards of a hundred thousand dollars to come to the conclusion that the residents of this town already knew. A new pool was unattainable, and even if by some miracle a philanthropist donated, donated the eleven million dollars to build the pool, Parawan's budget could not sustain the maintenance and staffing of a pool of that size. At the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting, Councilman Burton took to the podium for over an hour to try to erase from our memory that he and the former city manager were instrumental in closing the pool. They made us to believe that the health department and the insurance company, insurance company, I'm sorry, basically rendered the pool a complete disaster and not worthy to be repaired or reopened. In essence, the pool had lived its life and it was time to bury it. Tell me, what has happened between the meeting of February eleventh of two thousand twenty-one and April twenty-seventh of this year to resurrect the pool from the grave that could not have been done in two thousand twenty-one? The sacrifice this community made needlessly for two, for two years is appalling. Councilman Burton believes the community suffers from dementia. We remember the history. Recently, Parawan has received a lot of media attention regarding the renovation of the pool. Those who were interviewed fabricated the truth about the history in closing the pool. We will not and, we will not and have not forgotten the details of this terrible decision. It deeply saddens me in that those representing the citizens of Parawan are no better than the state and federal politicians who manipulate the truth to get to what they want. The only reason the pool is open now is that this is an election year. There is too much bad blood from this decision and Councilman Burton wants us to believe that he is the hero in this story. When in fact, the true heroes are the members of this community that gave their time, talent and treasure to restore the community pool. Not only that, but this community had the wisdom, fortitude and common sense to reject the ideology that Parawan can afford an eleven million dollar pool. Advice to anyone running for office in this election and all elections moving forward. Don't try to hoodwink us. Don't treat us as though we're morons and have low intelligence. Don't try to manipulate us with untruths. Be honest, forthright, and when you have made a mistake or made a bad decision, own up to your decision. The community will find more forgiveness if you admit to the error and apologize. We are all human and humans are not perfect, but dishonesty is never a good policy. Thank you.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow up with that. Um, got a question for you. So I was told that we are building two hundred new homes behind the Parawan P. Is that correct?
I've never heard that.
I've never heard that either. Okay. Are we building in front of Parawan P?
Do you want to answer to that?
If you would like me to, this is comment time, but if you want me to answer. So, you know, behind the Parawan P is BLM. There's, it's not part of the city. There's no way that could be built.
Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Um, in front of the P, up to the point where BLM starts, there is a, if you look at the Parawan, if you look at the county's parcel viewer, you can see there's a, a grid where there's dedicated streets and things like that. But I don't know of any building. I know that there is some property owners that are considering trying to build, um, some homes on parcels that are accessible by roads and, and that's, I think that's in a, in a, um, exploratory phase. But, I mean, it would be in, in the neighborhood of one, two, three homes, not, there's not a large subdivision.
Not a development?
No. There's a lot of rumors that go around.
I was getting really ticked off.
No.
I was like, that area, that needs to be developed.
No, there's, but it is gr- it is platted as, and there's, there, in, in parcels with streets that go in between them. The challenge for that is you have to get across the, you have to get not only physically a road across, you have to get all the infrastructure up in there and stuff like that. So it's a challenge to do anything at the base of the hill, but there is private property that could be done.
It's gonna be developed up there. Okay, good. So I can tell the person who told me that that they're full of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, some pretty, pretty strong voices in this room, so I didn't know if there was anybody else. I'm gonna give you a couple more seconds and otherwise we will move on. All right, thank you. So now moving out, um, out of our public comment into our consent meeting. These items tend to be administrative and approved with one motion. So it's the minutes from our city council meeting on June sixth, our approval of our warrant register and our financial report for June of two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, I have a question about the warrant register, about the check register. Uh, in that, there are several lost checks that were replaced. So I'd just like to ask for an explanation, 'cause there was, there was several Christmas bonus and different checks that were reported lost and then replaced.
That's for unclaimed property. That's people who have lost cash or checks and after six months, they can no longer cash their checks and we have to either try to find those people or turn them over to the state.
But they were all like employees and different ones and.
Some of them weren't.
A lot of them were. There were Christmas bonus.
Well, the ones that were on the. Right, the ones that were on the warrant register probably were, 'cause we know where they are. So they were reissued. The others were canceled. These were reissued.
I was just kinda concerned because there were a lot that were, were employees that had said that they had lost, I guess, their Christmas bonus checks, so.
They probably, well, I was one of them. I just didn't cash it. I forgot about it, but Kelly's not gonna do it that way any longer. It'll be through payroll.
Okay.
So it won't happen again.
I just, it just looked concerning. And then the, um, there's one other thing on that. There was a, said, uh, there.
Can I give a plug really quick on that?
Yeah.
Everybody go to mycash dot utah.gov. When we, we can't keep people's money if, if, if a check isn't deposited or something like that after some time. So when, when, when Judy says we send it to the state, it goes up to the state treasurer who holds those funds and they hold them for such a long, for a certain period of time. And you can go on, you can put your name in and, and I guarantee you, somebody or that you know or yourself has money up there waiting and you'd be surprised. And you can get that, those funds back. If it sits for long enough, they actually donate it to the school, the school system. It goes into the state school system, but it is a absolute pain in the butt administratively to deal with. And especially when it is like an employer, like just cash, you know, if it's a reimbursement check, it's very small. It may go home and sit on a, on a countertop and they get lost, but it's kind of a hassle for Judy, but that's what that is.
Okay, and then one other thing that, uh, there was a, a car wash and wax for two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I can speak to that. So we actually had, um, a citizen, um, um, make a claim that we had damaged her car. Um, it was parked near where the, where the, where they were working on the, just mowing the lawns for the parks. We couldn't really, we weren't really sure whether it was something that had, it was a brand-new car. Brand-new car, really nice, and there was like, there was grass on it and there was some little nicks. Like, not nicks, but you could, there was something there. Um, our guy was positive that it wasn't him, that he hadn't been that close to it. The, the citizen was insisting that it was. So rather than go through an insurance claim, we actually asked her if we, if we, if the city actually has your car detailed and waxed, um, would, would that suffice? And so rather than go through a full insurance claim, which would cost the city a lot more, that was the compromise. And, um, the citizen was really happy with the result. We avoided a, a compromise. That was a administrative judgment call. So that was the cost, but I'd rather that than a lost claim, which makes our insurance go up, so.
Okay, appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, it was actually a surprise when it came through. It was like, why, why are we paying for this? And it was, anyways, then I had to remember having talked through it and authorized it, so, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting, items six through eight.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving now from the consent meeting into the action meeting, these items do require council vote. And we will be starting with item nine, which is a request for facilitation of the Master Transportation Plan grant by McLean Farmer. Um, he is here to do a presentation, so we can give Kelly a minute to queue that up and a minute for him to introduce himself.
While we're queuing this up, I need to make sure that there's, there's not a confusion because we have, we're working on our active transportation plan, which is our biking, running. We're, we're looking at what's gonna go on our general plan in the future for trails, um, bike paths, things like that. This is completely and entirely unrelated. This is the transportation plan, the road system of the city. We, we need to update that. It hasn't been updated for some time. This is where we're planning, where we're gonna have corridors, where we're gonna have residential streets, um, and, and so forth. We haven't updated our transportation plan since two thousand twelve, I think is the, is the number. Um, there was a, a grant we've applied for, for several years. And this year, we got the grant and, um, and so, and, and that was, uh, that was the mayor's, um, doing. Um, Cleve had applied for it the prior year. This year, it was right during the middle of the changeover of old city manager, new city manager and, um, and it was applied for and we received it. And we, we are looking to have Jones at DeMille help facilitate this. It's, it's quite a process and we need, um, we need to have an engineering firm do this. So that's why Jones at DeMille is here.
Perfect. Thanks, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to come and talk about this. Um, I believe we kind of helped with that application a little bit, giving you kind of budget numbers to shoot for and stuff like that. And so really, we wanted to come today and just kind of, first off, introduce myself and then give you a brief overview of what the end product will look like, um, and what you'll, you'll kind of expect to see in the end. So first off, my name's McLean. Um, I grew up in a small town by Richfield called Annabelle. Um, and I moved back, back home and was able to buy a house there. And now my family and I settled down there and I work for Jones at DeMille out of our headquarter office in Richfield. Um, and so I drove down today just to talk about this transportation plan, um, and kind of go over generally what, what you'll end up seeing. I could spend two, three hours talking about this if you want me to, but I'll try and keep it short. Um, so I had, I had her pull up this, uh, presentation. This is a, a transportation plan we just completed about, uh, three to four months ago for Sevier County. Um, and so typically, these plans, they take about a year-long, it's a year-long process. So what happens is we, we do data collection and what that entails is we take, um, all of the GIS data that the city has, um, and bring that in. We also bring GIS data from the state DOT, so you dot, uh, we bring, uh, we come out and we do traffic counts with tubes, um, that we put across the road. What that's gonna do is it's gonna tell you speed. It's gonna tell you the classification of the cars that are on each road. So like your trucks, your cars, it'll count bikes even, um, to, to determine how many vehicles are going on each road. And then it'll also tell you just a general count. So you'll get an average daily count on each road, um, so you'll know how many, um, vehicles are basically on that road. What that does is it helps us to determine classifications, and I'm gonna try not to get into the weeds of this, but, um, what the classifications do is it'll allow you to apply for funding through UDOT so that you can get funding for the roads that you don't, no town or city really has a lot of money for that, so. And we can help you with that as well. Um, so really, I just wanna introduce the concept of this. Um, would you mind scrolling down on that left side? There you go, keep going. Okay, right there. So part of the project is creating this story map is what we call it. Um, basically what it is, is a map that tells the story about a project. So in the end, you're gonna get this. Instead of seeing a paper hard copy sitting on someone's desk, desk collecting dust, um, you're gonna get this and you're gonna be able to pull this up in council and you'll be able to see the roads that are planned. So like your planning and zoning meetings that you have, the planning and zoning, uh, chair and, and all of the planning and zoning committee can pull this up. When a development comes in, they can look and make sure they're not gonna put a building in where a road is supposed to be. Um, where that's probably happened a lot in the past. Um, and then you can see up here on the screen, um, you'll have socio and, uh, or, gee, sorry, demographic and socioeconomic data. Um, that's just gonna give you your general population data from the census, um, your roadway surface type, your average daily traffic, that's your, um, traffic count data. And then we'll also give you a accident safety map that basically highlights where those crashes are happening within Parawan City. Um, and then on the active transportation plan, Dan, um, do you have somebody working on that for you or is that in-house?
So that's actually with a grant through the state of Utah, um.
With Chris Wiltzy with Bike Utah. He's, he's working through that with us.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're in good, we're in a really good place with that.
Okay. What I'd like to do is if we can, um, take the findings from his project and incorporate it into this one, um, so that it's kind of all in one spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so once we get to that point, I'll coordinate with you on that portion of it.
And just, just for everybody's understanding, it's, um, they've had, um, they basically came and did a listening tour and, and listened to different, they had a meeting with kind of, um, staff governmental. They had a meeting with just different shareholders, uh, the elderly, uh, Chamber of Commerce, um.
Focus groups from the community. He did a day here.
Different focus groups. We had maps that people could draw on and, and everything. And now it's the next point to, to start kind of crunching that to, to some, to some recommendations and then start having some interaction with the, with the council on, on what do we kind of wanna have finalized that plan to look like. That's where we're at.
Great. Um, so yeah, we'll incorporate that into it. Um, and then we'll look at a short-range, uh, what we call a transportation improvement plan. So we'll look at the roads and with city staff, determine what projects need to be done in a zero-to-five-year period and a five-to-ten-year period. That's gonna help you with funding as well. We can help you with the, um, identifying what projects can qualify for what funding so that you can know ahead of time what you can go apply for. Um, and then we'll compile our report. It's a super awesome read if you wanna fall asleep at night. It's, it'll probably end up being about a hundred pages long, um, but we'll provide that to you and that's what you'll actually have to adopt, um, for the plan itself. Um, so we can help you through that adoption process as well as far as getting that adopted. Um, but that'll probably be June next year, so. Um, that's a, a really quick overview. I don't wanna take any more of your time. Um, I did provide, um, a proposal, um, just outlining basically what I just talked about. Um, the grant provided, I think it was about fifty-five thousand and you have to provide five thousand for a total project cost of sixty thousand dollars. Um, so it's, it's a really good deal for the city as far as getting a plan completed. Um, so I, I provided that proposal. I also have contracts here if you wanna sign them tonight. Um, or I can just provide those to you and you can sign them and send them over to me later, so. Any questions?
Well, I know when Kendrick talked to me about it, he told me that you are just in the middle of so many of these right now. Um, that you're working on them. It's kind of what you're living and breathing and eating and drinking and it's right up your alley to help Parawan out, so.
Yep.
Um, so you're probably the expert in the area at this point with the number that you've done and that you're working on in the markets around us.
Yeah. So I'm actually just finishing up Beaver City. It's just north of you. Um, and I have about thirteen I'm working on right now, so there's, there's a lot of them. Um, but what that does for us is it helps us to be efficient. So hopefully we can push this forward and get it done within the year, so.
Okay.
I like it. I think it's something we need to have done.
Yeah, I have an old map. It's what's in our plan. It's an old map and, and, and Cleve had, had worked on something. I have an updated, um, PDF that was a proposed, some proposed changes. And it, it makes it really hard when you have people come in and wanna, a developer, they wanna look at something and, and it's an old map and it, and it shows even some of the, the roads are in there, are labeled wrong. I mean, it shows basically a road that goes right down the flood channel, all the way out. Obviously, we're not gonna build a road on top of the flood channel. It, it is in, we're in need of, of updating it because that is a, this document is what we use. Like he said, with planning and zoning, we have somebody come in and, and ask for something. It says what the widths would be on a road if you wanna build it there. It says where it, it's gonna need to go, so it, it has legal ramifications and we need something that's up to date. We just do, and so this is great. And, and to work with Jones at DeMille that has a lot of experience with these, um, they've been on top of it, Johnny on the spot, helping us apply and, and, and helping us, um, to get ready and do it, so. Um, I, I feel like we should go with them and do it. I feel like they will be the guys to help us the best.
I'm gonna make one more comment and then I'll stop. Um, the legislature just barely came out with new legislation this last, uh, meeting they had that only allows a thirty-two-foot paved width of roads. Um, but what I'd like.
On a residential. On a residential.
On a residential road. What I like to do is help you come up with, uh, typical sections that can, um, get you out of that thirty-two-foot width if you would like. Um, there is a clause in there that if your typical sections show that you have on-street parking, then those widths can increase. Um, and so what I'll do is I can come up with typical sections for you so that you have options out there, um, if you do wanna have the developer provide on-street parking as well. So hopefully that'll help on the development side.
Well, I, I think it's a five thousand dollars well spent.
It doesn't hurt that fifty-five thousand of that is a grant.
That's right.
Like, that's, thanks for helping us do that.
Yeah.
I didn't know you guys were doing that, so thank you.
Yep.
So at this time, if there isn't any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve this request for facilitation of the master transportation plan grant, um, by McLean Farmer with Jones and DeMille.
I'll make a motion to approve the facilitation of master plan, transportation plan grant with, uh, Jones and DeMille.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Would you like me to just leave these contracts with you?
Yes, you can just leave them with Callie.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, can you hand them to me?
There you go.
I'll review them right now. Thanks.
Maybe one point of clarification, Dan, is that, you know, that machine, is it in the budget? That five thousand?
I do not recall off the top of my head.
I think it, it, didn't we do that, David? Didn't we set aside?
I, I remember discussing it.
That's what I was thinking.
And I would've put notes and I would've seen those notes.
Cause when we were talking about the, the master plan and, and the, the- Mm-hmm. Uh, I think it was, yeah.
I just hate saying yes with definitive, when I, when I don't have it on, right on the top of my brain. So I'll check, but I'm sure we do. If not, that's something that we can, we can do an amendment when we're mending the budget if needed.
Okay, now moving to action item number ten. This is a power rate study. We'll have Jeremy Franklin, Director of our Power Department, come and speak with us. And we also, I think we have, do we have Chris Lund here or no?
He's gonna join remotely.
Okay. Oh, you have the Owl or what do we call it?
Yeah, we got Owl.
And Chris is with Utility Financial Solutions.
I can see your email on my phone and my laptop still doesn't see it, so. I'm gonna jump online with Zoho. I figured all the time sitting here it would.
Your computer is overworked. McLean, you don't have to stay unless you'd like to learn more about our municipal government.
I'll, I'll just, I'll, we'll send them to you.
Okay, thank you.
I was just trying to give you better billable hours.
There you go, it's, it'll be online, I'll see it.
Kendrick must not have stayed. He must have left. Couldn't. Oh, he couldn't?
We must not gonna be getting on our computer. We love our email. Serenity now. Let me tell it that it's gonna be using the Owl. You need this turned?
If you're gonna do it, yeah.
But then-
But then the audience can't see.
They can see this one.
Okay.
Cause we're not gonna have it up here.
Right.
Chris, can you hear us?
Use your muscle.
Yes, hello, are you, can you hear me?
Yep, this is the first time using the, um, Big Brother device here. It's called the Owl. It's, it's awesome, but we're gonna give it a shot. I'm gonna let you have-
Okay, awesome. Chris, were you gonna share your screen or did you want us to pull up the slides?
Uh, whatever you prefer. I ha- I have it ready to share, but if you'd prefer to control it on your side, it's totally up to you, Jeremy.
Okay, so, okay, we'll have you share them. That'd be easier, I guess, if that's all right.
Okay.
Um, so Mayor and Council, you get to be entertained by me again, it sounds like. Well, mostly Chris this time, so you're more fortunate. But, uh, so like Mayor said, Chris Lund with Utility Financial Solutions, um, has been working on our rate study for, I think, almost a year. Um, we kinda paused it for a minute to do our power cost adjustment study, which Chris was, was the main, um, driver of that also, the main, um, preparer of that. Um, so, uh, um, with this rate study, like I said, it's been almost a year and the amount of information that Utility Financial Solutions, um, requests to go into this study is, is, uh, is quite a lot. It's, which is great. Um, so I gotta give a big thank you to Judy for providing all the information to Chris and a huge thanks to Chris for all the, all the hours that he's spent on this. Um, so like I said, Chris and his company did the, our power cost adjustment study. Um, and, uh, and that, that's obviously following our power purchase costs, which are, um, which makes this rate study actually become, uh, as it came back and we went over it with Powerboard and Chris and I went over it, it's actually looking really good. Like our rates need minimal adjustments from what Chris's, um, study's showing and how him and I feel after conversing. And, um, so really some minor tweaks to a few things and some suggestions that Chris will have, but, you know, huge, um, uh, having that PCA in place to kinda just help with those fluctuating power costs. And so I think in the, you know, heading into the future, our rates are looking really well. We don't need any major, major changes. Um, but I'll let Chris go a little more into detail on that. Um, yeah, I think that's all I have, Chris, if you wanna take it away.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. And, uh, thank you, everyone, for having me a plenty of your counseling this, this evening. I appreciate it very much. Uh, as Jeremy mentioned, we, we've all spent lots of hours and, um, looked very closely at your, uh, your electric utility, uh, financials, your rates, um, your power supply. And I think we've come up with a good combination of solutions here to fine-tune things to keep you financially healthy, uh, for the foreseeable future. So with that, as Jeremy mentioned, um, back in April of this past year, you had, um, authorized the implementation of that power cost adjustment that, that Jeremy had mentioned. So with that power cost adjustment, we're able to, um, you know, over time slowly stabilize the revenue coming in from your customers and, um, try to stabilize those varying power supply costs. So with that, I wanted to, um, share the presentation here with you. Jeremy, did you have something to say?
No, you're good, no.
Okay, um, I just wanted to mention, as I go through the slides, if there are any questions, uh, from the council, any discussion, uh, feel free to, um, you know, uh, you know, ask me to clarify or expand on anything. Uh, there's no need to wait till the end. However, at the end, we do have editing slide before the appendix that we can certainly have Q and A and additional discussions. But, uh, feel free to, um, be involved dynamically throughout the presentation if, if you are interested in doing that.
Chris, sorry to interrupt. Let's see if, can you hear us? I don't know if, if they, if, if somebody were to speak from the council, can you hear us?
I, I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, this is the first time we've had the Owl in this room. So we're, we're, we're guinea pig testing on ourselves right now. So just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, I can hear. Um, I may ask for questions to be, um, you know, clarified or, or, um, you know, spoken again if, if I can't quite hear the full set of question, but I, I did hear you, thank you. So when we looked at the, um, electric utility, we wanted to summarize this evening the financial results, uh, that we see in your electric department. Uh, we wanted to review your customers' rates and how we might suggest that you tweak, as Jeremy mentioned, or just slightly fine-tune those customer rates over time. And then just acknowledge that we did recently implement that PCA and we'll, uh, wrap that into the conversation as well. So what I wanna do first here is show you a financial snapshot. Um, this is a summary financial page out of our modeling. Um, there's roughly, um, about a hundred different tabs in our modeling that we roll up into this financial snapshot. But what I wanted to strike here is we project out for this next fiscal year. If you all probably know, you have a July to June fiscal year. So your new twenty-twenty-four fiscal year, uh, just started on the first of July this past, uh, couple of weeks, you know, week and a half ago. So what we're showing here is, um, each row here in this chart is a different fiscal year. So we're projecting what your financials will look like at the end of this next fiscal year, which would be, uh, next June thirty, if you will, June thirty of twenty-twenty-five will be that next, the end of this fiscal, uh, excuse me, twenty-twenty-four will be the end of fiscal twenty-twenty-four. Um, then fiscal twenty-twenty-five out to twenty-twenty-eight. So we, when we do these analysis, we feel quite confident in the first year or two. But I wouldn't end of the third, fourth and fifth year, uh, we just do our best with the assumptions that we put into the model predicting things like power supply costs, uh, what type of inflation might we have, those types of things. So there's confidence we feel, um, with your rates for this fiscal year of twenty-twenty-four. We would, um, suggest that, you know, we work with Jeremy and Judy ongoing and at least check your financial position each year and then make sure that ground pays financially for the electric, uh, utility. So what you can see here is we show a number of financial, or, uh, targets, that we call them. Uh, the first one is that we're showing you without rate adjustments. Meaning if the customer's rates, base rates did not change at all and we just have that PCA implementation and no base rate changes, what are we predicting your utility financials would look like over the next five years? And one important column that I want you to look at, uh, really two, two columns. So the first one is what we call adjusted operating income. So you can see here, we're recommending that each year that the electric utility would have a positive operating income of somewhere between, uh, mid-three-hundred thousand, close to the low four-hundred thousand dollars per year. So what target operating income simply is a measurement of, it takes all your annual expenses, uh, it, it takes all your annual, uh, all your annual income minus all your annual expenses. And if that number between the two, you subtract those two. If there's a positive, it means the utility have a positive, um, balance at the end of the year. They had money left over to fund the operations and do, uh, things like upgrade the system, uh, make improvements. So we want you to have some sort of positive revenue stream coming from the electric department. And you can see here without rate adjustments, we're predicting that if you didn't do any rate adjustments for five years, that your, um, operating in, income would start to drop. So this next year, we're predicting it to be on pace. Uh, but if you didn't do any, uh, adjustments for the next four years after that, you can see that predicted operating income continuing to drop off down out into the last year of twenty-twenty-eight to around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So meaning that those cus- the customers wouldn't be paying enough in each of these subsequent later years to fund what target operating income we wanna have you at the end of each fiscal year. Directly related to that is what we call your projected cash balance. And when we say cash balance, that should be money that you have on hand, available to spend on utility needs and functions. So right now, we're predicting that you would have, uh, at the end of this next year, just under four million dollars available for cash. And then with no rate increases, you can see that that would start to taper off to around three-point-three million. Um, so those are some key targets here. So we're predicting that you're gonna be relatively healthy for the foreseeable future in the main function that allowed for that is the fact that you did implement that power cost adjustment, uh, back in April. So are there any questions on the, the financial projection, uh, without doing any rate adjustments? In the next screen I'll show you are the recommended rate adjustments that we would suggest that you consider, uh, in these later years. And I'll show you how that operating, um, income stabilizes and your cash balance stabilizes as well. Are there any questions on the screen here?
No, I think we're good, Chris.
So with that, here's the same screen, but what we've done here is we've put in a series of recommended base rate changes that we're predicting, uh, into future years. So without showing any, um, base rate adjustment needed other than some fine tuning for this next fiscal year for twenty-twenty-four and then out into twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight, we're showing a series of essentially inflationary type increases of two-point-two percent each year. So you can see with those recommended two-point-two percent rate increases to your base rates, we can see that that adjusted operating income stays stable and starts to slowly increase to meet or exceed our recommended four-hundred thousand dollar target out into that last year, as well as that projected cash balance stabilizing and reaching around that four-million-dollar mark that you had been, uh, previously at. So you can see that it takes just a few simple, um, inflationary type rate changes each year, uh, small incremental, consistent, uh, slow, um, small increases to keep you financially healthy and on, on target financially. So are there any discussion, uh, questions on that with the recommended two-point-twos out in those future years? The idea being we would design rates and recommend for your new rates for this year, targeting overall zero, um, plus the new PCA and then maybe revisit it sometime this, uh, next twelve months. So roughly this time next year, we'd be having a similar discussion and making sure that this two-point-two percent for next year is still on pace. And then we present those recommended rates next year.
Chris, do you wanna talk about the debt coverage ratio and why it changes in twenty-twenty-eight?
Uh, can you say a question again, I'm sorry?
Debt coverage ratio, why it changes in twenty-twenty-eight? There's a, there's a note there.
Uh, yeah, so you had some debt dropping off. So that debt coverage ratio, um, significantly, uh, increases. So the way we do this is we look at your, um, it's a measurement of debt affordability. It takes your revenue from rates from your customers and it looks at all of your annual, uh, debt principal and interest payments. And we do a calculation to make sure the revenue you receive from your customers, that you can at least make your date, your debt payment, uh, principal and interest at least, uh, one time. If you can't ma- make your debt principal and interest payment at least one time, you wouldn't be making, be able to afford to make your payments. So most bond covenants, if you have a bond on that debt, uh, require a debt ratio usually to be around one-point-two or a one-point-four. And you can see that with this reach track, we're keeping you, uh, above the minimum of what most bond covenants would require. And then as that debt drops off, that, um, debt coverage ratio goes up cause you don't have as much debt to pay for, so that ratio increases.
Yeah, and, and we-
Why, why that number increases in that late, in that later year?
Yep, and we, we talked about that at previous budget meetings, the debt coverage ratio and one-point-two to one-point-four being, we wanna be above that number. And we're just barely above that now. Um, the, the, one of these things as you consider with a utility fund is, you know, when that bond falls off in twenty-twenty-eight, is there something on our master plan that we're looking- when that bond falls off in 2028, is there something on our master plan that we're looking to go ahead and do? That would be the time to replace it with another project so that we stay ahead of our capital, you know, maintenance, large capital maintenance issues. That would be a target for maybe bringing on a new bond if we wanted to. Just, just kind of wanted to make that.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a good observation. And related to that, we put a placeholder budgeting for the electric department to be able to spend $300,000 over the next five years. So it may not spend exactly that increment each year. You might spend, you know, $200,000 in one year and, and, you know, $400,000 in another year, but overall, we're budgeting to be able to allow the electric department to do essentially each year the equivalent of $300,000 in, in capital improvements. And when we say capital improvements, that would include things like transformers, bucket trucks, you know, any necessary distribution infrastructure that it takes to deliver power to your customers from an infrastructure standpoint, but also the equipment, trucks, you know, backhoes, excavators, you know, whatever it takes to actually do the work as well. So we have given the utility a placeholder in a budget to work within under this scenario, but if, to your point, if you do identify some material upgrades that need to be done, we can work with you in future years and put those additional costs to this $300,000, and we can see how it would impact your future debt coverage ratio and see what type of bonding maybe you'd need to do and make sure that you can afford it and that you can stay healthy with those additional future potential upgrades beyond the $300,000. Any other discussion on this, this page here?
Nope, I think we're good.
So this page shows a summary of each type of rate area you have or general type of customer that you have on your electric system, and what would be their general monthly bill impact from what their current rates are today, meaning what have they been paying versus what might they pay next year, starting if these rates are approved by council for fiscal year 2024. So you can see since from the prior slides for fiscal year 2024, which is what we're calling year one, in general, we have here your different types of customers. So you have your residential customers, your commercial customers, a variety of size of commercial customers, lighting, agricultural, and commercial customers. We do have this breakdown here called residential demand, and we'll talk more about that in the future slides here. So essentially, what we list here are the average, what our, or energy usage is by each customer within these types of customer groupings, and we show what the current bill, dollar amount on each customer's bill looks like each month. So currently, this is suggesting that your residential customers, on average, each month pay $94.54 on their electric, electric bill. So you can see the recommended rates that will go over here soon, their bill, the average customer's bill would stay the same, so that's why it's a net zero over here for residential. Lighting, we recommend a slight bump up to, from $6 to $6.25. Commercial, a variety of rates essentially are close to that net zero as much as possible, and the agricultural just bumped up slightly by about $1.50 a month, and the commercial bumped up just very slightly, about $15 a month. And that might seem like, like a lot, but compared to their average bill being almost $8,200 a month, it was a very minimal to try to just keep their rates as consistent as possible. So overall in that essentially is that each average customer within these groupings of type of customer, from residential to commercial, their bill should stay relatively flat in addition to that PCA that we've implemented back in April. Any discussion or questions on this summary sheet showing the general average rate impact from the current rates to the recommended rates that we'll be talking about on the next slide?
No, not seen any questions, Chris.
Is there a way to take that hide control bar down?
That, that's what we were just trying to do.
Just move your mouse.
Is that, is that on your screen, Chris, where it says hide control bar, or is that on our-
That's yours.
It's yours.
Oh, it's on mine. Oh, wow, I tried to have Callie moving it's on mine. See, I told you I wasn't a techy. All right, we're good now.
Is something blocking the screen?
It was, it was my, my mouse.
Okay.
We're good.
Is it okay now?
Yeah.
So here is a summary listing of the actual rate, recommended rate breakdown of the different customer groupings and the different components on the customer's bill. So this is pretty similar to what you currently have and what you're charging your customers now in terms of the components of their bill. There's a consistent monthly fixed charge, or what we call a monthly customer charge. There's a per kilowatt hour or an energy charge they can have on the bill. All of your rates, except for residential and lighting, pay a KW peak demand charge, and we'll talk about that in more detail here as well. And then your commercial time-of-use customer, they have two energy rates because they have what they call an on-peak energy rate they pay during the more expensive hours, and they have a less expensive off-peak energy rate that they're paying during the evening hours or night hours. So this is a breakdown by those customer groupings, by the different charge categories of what the rates might look like next year if the council, you know, adopts these recommended rates. So for example, residential customers would pay $18.50 a month on their base charge, and their energy charge would be 9.2 cents or 9.3 cents rounded, and then so on and so down the customer groupings. So the main two areas that we'll need to spend more time on, and we can spend as much time as anyone would like on any of these groupings as well, but the main two things I want to point out is residential up here. There's also this residential demand option down here. So you can see where all your other customers pay a demand charge, your residential's are not currently paying a demand charge. The industry is heading more toward having at least a demand charge for each customer, so this might be an example of if you were to adopt a residential demand option, that they would have the $18.50 a month customer charge, they have a 50 cent per KW demand charge, then their energy charge would go down to 8.98 cents, essentially nine cents rounded. I will describe what the demand charge is in more detail, because on the next slide, we have actually a sample progression of what that might look like over the next five years for the residential's to evolve their rates to a full, full demand rate. But before we get to that, are there any discussion or questions on these different rate components or breakdowns before we get to the details of what the residential demand option looks like and how that affects the customers?
No, no questions, Chris. I think on the next slide, if you, with the demand explanation, I think we'll clear things up.
Yeah, let me jump to the next slide. I'll come back to this slide. I probably should have put them in a different order, but let me jump to this next slide, because this shows that residential demand progression, if you were to go this route. We're trying to project out five years as to what the evolution of this residential demand rate might look like. So currently, your residential customers are paying $17.92 a month for their fixed customer charge. They're paying about 9.4 cents kilowatt hour once they're paying the PCA. And this is just showing a placeholder PCA of roughly 2.2 cents, but you know, the PCA will be whatever it actually is calculated to be each month based on your PCA methodology that we've implemented back in April, which extends the last three months at four cents. So this is just projecting out into the future with a static placeholder that would actually change based on real PCA power supply. So what I want you to really focus on are the numbers up here. So we would look at over the next five years, for example, changing the current residential customer charge from $17.92 to this next fiscal year to $18.50, and then slowly increasing it over the next five years to $19, $19.50, $20. So out in year five, we get that $17.92 charge up to $20.50. Now, that charge is designed to help recoup some of your base operational and maintenance expenses, so it would pay for customer service, billing, meter reading, those types of consistent day-in and day-out expenses that the electric department incurs on behalf of supporting the customers. Then if we jump down here to this demand charge, the energy charge here is essentially trying to recoup the power supply. So if you think about when you pay your power bill, or you pay for all of your energy costs from UAMs, we're trying to recoup those power bill costs through the KWH energy charge and through that PCA charge. And currently, within the KWH, we have some of your operational expenses buried in that 9.4 cents. So what we're trying to do with the demand charge is between the customer charge and the demand charge, we're trying to recoup more of your fixed operational type expenses, and then over time, KWH and PCA would just be attempting to try to recoup your power bill costs. So we're trying to separate the two. So we have KWH and PCA for power supply and customer charge and demand charge for OM operational expenses. Let me explain briefly, if we forward out, that's forward out to year five, you can see we went from the $17.92 to $20.50 for that customer charge. We went from no demand charge eventually to about $4.50 for that demand charge, but we, and at the same time, bringing that energy charge down from roughly 9.4 cents to about 6.3 cents, plus whatever the PCA is at that time. So we're trying to isolate those costs in different components. You might say, well, why are we doing that? Why is it any different? Well, if you think of it this way, a KWH is a measurement of how many, how much energy you consume. A KW or demand charge is a measurement of how much energy you require at one moment in time. So it's the maximum power that you might require each month, rather than the total amount of power that you used or consumed in that month. So when we talk about maximum power or maximum demand, that's what the electric department is sizing your service to, is to support your maximum usage requirement. So things like transformers, which are the cans on the poles or on the pedestals if it's underground, the poles, the wires, you know, all the substations, the whole infrastructure of all the physical equipment in your distribution system are all sized and maintained and replaced in direct support of those peak demands. So that's why it's fairest to break some of that out as a demand charge and strip it out of that energy charge and make this more power supply between that KWH and that PCA, and these two more your fixed support costs. So with that, are there any questions or discussion on that sample progression and the difference between a KWH and a KW charge, and the fact that we're focusing mostly on this year one, but I wanted you to have an idea of what it might look like five years out?
I don't see questions, Chris. I'll just make a, maybe a comment that a residential demand, like just a typical home, is probably in the 5 to 7 KW range. So that first year, you can see if you had a 5 KW on your demand, you're going to be, that demand charge would be $2.50. And as, as we start to electrify more homes, or we add electric vehicles or things like that, then usually your demand goes significantly higher, could be in the 15, 20 range. So just kind of a note there that, you know, typically, most houses are usually about 7 KW, 5 to 7.
Okay, question, Jeremy. Is that per month, or I mean-
Yeah, so what it'll do, it'll read your peak for that month. So whatever the meter will read as you kick on your AC, say it peaks at 5, and you kick on your microwave at the same time and you hit 10, it'll store that peak until you surpass that peak of the month, or your bill or your meter is red, and then that will reset to zero for the next month.
For the next month.
Yeah. So you're actually better off as a homeowner if we do a demand to, to cycle your appliances. Don't run your AC, your blow dryer, and your, I know you have a problem with the blow dryer, Councilman Burton, so.
My wife.
Same as me. But, so if you cycle your appliances, then your, your demand would stay lower.
The other thing to point out is, as we have more people getting electric cars, this is not a comment on electric cars, good or bad, but the more you have in a neighborhood that are regularly plugging in an electric car, the more we have to adjust our physical infrastructure to be able to handle that. And a demand charge is something that, I think of it as a fairness charge, because if, if I have somebody who's putting really high demand on the system, they will, they will pay for that demand, and somebody that isn't, won't. So it is, it kind of passes that on to those that are, that are really putting a load on the system. A load is actually the correct term in this case, right?
Yes.
Rocky Mountain Power's always done this for, you know, irrigation use.
Yeah.
And it, yeah, it's fair.
Yeah, we, we currently do it with our commercial customers. We have a $3.59 demand charge on all commercial, but as, as residential's demands grow, I think it's the best, most fair way to do it.
Yeah, because the way it works, yeah, when you have a peak use, yeah, you pay that. But then when you don't have that use, then it's to your benefit.
Correct.
Too. So I mean, that's where I'm just relating it to the irrigation, irrigation seasons and things, and it equates out very, very fairly.
Yes, correct. Anything to add to that, Chris?
I heard something about the air conditioning, but I didn't quite get to the full question.
All right, we, we're just, he was just talking more about like irrigation on his farm. He has a demand charge from Rocky Mountain Power, and he, you know, obviously, when there's no usage, his demand charge is zero, and as he kicks on his pumps and wells, and then his demand would spike up, and it's the same, same thing other than for a house.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. As you mentioned, Jeremy, all of your current rates have a demand component and a demand charge on them, except lighting, which most lighting is not even metered, and then also the residential. So if we do it with those residential's, we'd essentially be putting everyone on a similar type of structure that all of your customers already have.
Right.
And on a demand charge, it's only finding that single monthly peak and charging you based on that single peak. So let's say that you have an air conditioner, and you come home, and your air conditioning's on, you start up, you start cooking your meal, you have various appliances on, and let's say you hit that 5 KW peak load. So your bill, let's say for next year, would be 5 times 50 cents, it'd be $2.50 for that entire month for that 5 KW peak. But understand that you could hit that 5 KW peak every single day, or for that matter, every single hour of every single day, and you'd still only be charged that $2.50. It's not charging you that each time you hit that peak, it's charging you the, the single time that you hit that peak. Does that help explain?
Yeah.
Because some people fear that, you know, I'm going to be charged this each hour or each day that I might hit a certain level of usage. It's only looking at the single monthly highest one, and if you hit that or somewhere near it, every hour of the day or every day of the month, you're not going to be charged multiple times for that.
Yes, and then it will reset at the end of the month when the billing read happens. So yeah, I think, I think we grasped that.
And the one thing, I guess I should ask, are there any additional sort of discussion on this before we talk about some scenarios of how might, this might play out over the next five years on a variety of customers?
No, not seen any questions.
So Jeremy and I spent, I don't know, we really spent about two hours breaking strong on how we wanted to present this, Jeremy?
Yeah, at least two hours.
I'm still not convinced it's the perfect way to do it, but essentially, what we did here is we simulated a customer's monthly bill, what, what they would pay under current rates here, what they would pay in year one with the demand rates, and what might they pay out in year five, if and when we evolved to that other screen of the higher demand charge and the lower KWH charge. And this is sort of a complex chart here, because not only are we showing you- because not only are we showing you what a bill would look like under the current rates, under next year's potential rates, and also potentially five years out, we wanted to show you at different usage levels. So currently, your, your residential customers on average use six hundred and sixty-four kilowatt hours of energy per month. So we wanted to use that six sixty-four as an example each time so we could show you what the average customer's bill is here currently. So that's where we get that ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents that we showed you earlier. So that's their seventeen ninety-two customer charge. It's their six hundred and sixty-four kilowatt hours times your current energy charge of nine point four cents rounded. So you're paying sixty-two eighteen in your energy KWH charge. There currently is no demand charge. I simulated a sample PCA and then, so the total bill on average is that ninety-four fifty-four. So we fast forward out and here we showed you with no demand charge. So we have the peak KW or peak usage at zero. Here we showed you a scenario of somebody having a two KW demand, which is a relatively low use, low impact max user. So they're not running a whole lot of high-power appliances. Here's a four KW peak customer at the average usage. So we predict that your average residential will be maybe between that four and five KW range. So we're trying to simulate that average user. And then we tried to put in a higher user, someone that uses closer to a thousand kilowatt hours a month and potentially closer to sixteen KW so they have many more appliances, much more electric need instantaneously running at the same time. So we could show you the impacts on the low user, the middle user and the high energy user, and also the low, middle to high demand user. So under the current rates, the four hundred kilowatt hour customer pays about sixty-four dollars and ten cents. This next year, we predict their bill will be as flat as possible. We predict about a three cent increase per month. We try to keep that as stable and zero as possible. But the average customer is right at that zero break-even point. And then the higher use, higher demand customer would have roughly an additional four dollars and ninety-eight cents per month on their bill. And then you can fast forward out into year five where we evolved those demand charges higher and we brought those kilowatt hour energy charges down lower. You can see that we're predicting that the low use, low impact customer, their bill should go down over the next five years by roughly eighty-two cents less expensive per month than even current. And then the average customer, we feel, will be at about a break-even. And then those higher use, higher load or higher demand max user will on average be paying about forty-six, forty dollars and eighty-two cents more per month. Again, paying is more of a equitable thing, paying more of their fair share of that additional infrastructure required to service this type of customer. So any thoughts or discussion on this progression?
Chris, the year five with demand, the, those numbers do reflect the PCA charge also, right? It's, it's in the first two columns there, but I think the, the numbers are still the same, it looks like.
Oh, yeah, these, yeah, these should have carried forward. You're right. In this case, I, I only carried the, the total dollars. I should have carried the units here too, but it does, yeah.
Okay.
And I was carrying a fixed placeholder, an example PCA. But in reality, you know, we don't know what that PCA is gonna do next month, whether in five years. We're just trying to put a placeholder just to recognize that you will likely have a PCA. And we're trying to say, all things being equal, you know, other billing components of the customer charge, the energy charge and the demand charge, these would be your general billing impacts outside of the PCA. But yes, thank you for that clarification. This year five does include the baseline PCA example.
Chris, and that, does that use, this also just shows apples to apples in the years? Is, this doesn't show if we were to do that two point two percent inflationary adjustment, correct?
Correct. This is showing baseline so we can show general impacts of simply changing the rate structure. But yeah, each year we've worked with you, say, okay, if we wanna still do two point two percent next year, what would it look like? And we'll try to give you a progression of, you know, next year, current will be year one rates and year one will be potentially with the two point two. So these would also include the two point twos. So some of these might go up slightly, but apples for apples, showing the baseline. We're trying to keep the low and, and average users pretty constant. And then those higher users and higher demand customers would see.
So the individual's cost, their bill, is going to fluctuate according to that PCA. I mean, it is not gonna be consistent. I mean, it can fluctuate. It can go up and down.
It'll fluctuate by usage and by the PCA.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the PCA will, will fluctuate by our power costs with that other study. Yeah. Which hopefully will be still trending downward.
Is that what it's doing now?
Yeah, it has been the last few months, slowly.
So then any other questions or discussion on that, this sample progression?
No, I don't see any questions, Chris.
We've gone over this one. So I did just want to come back to and talk about that PCA again. Essentially, it's, we're trying to balance your taking power supply costs. So as your costs go up and down, we're trying to more dynamically pass that on through to your customers but on as smooth of an average basis as possible to try to minimize, you know, a lot of spiking and impacts on your customers. So we're currently using a six-month rolling average, meaning we look back for the past six months to what your power cost at that and we calculate what that PCA rate should be. And we update it monthly and they fine-tune adjustments to it to try to eventually bring what you paid in power costs equal to what you recoup from your customers on their monthly bills. So currently, as of April twenty twenty-three, you've been holding that PCA at four cents per kilowatt hour. And we'll continue to work with staff to monitor that and to fine-tune that as needed to try to keep your power costs in check with how you're covering to your customers as smoothly as possible. So any additional discussion or questions on the PCA?
No.
So with that, that's the summary presentation I had prepared for you this evening. I do have some appendix detailed slides on all of the various rate components. But I felt we would only need those if any direct questions come up. So I thought I would pause here and open it back up for any general discussion or Q and A.
I, I believe I shared all the slides with the council and the mayor a couple of days ago too. So they have the, the appendix slides and stuff to look over if they have other questions later also. So I'm not seeing any other questions, Chris.
Okay, well, with that, I just again wanted to compliment the everyone's staff, Power Board and the council for all your interest in really keeping a close eye on this and trying to keep the electric department as healthy as possible while also trying to minimize the impacts on your customers. So I applaud you for the hard work that you put into this project and I thank you for working on it with you.
Well, thank you, Chris. I know you put a lot of time into it. We've had a lot of phone conversations and have given lots of information back and forth and I'm, I'm pretty happy with the results. So hopefully, we can, yes, stay the path we're headed.
So would you like me to stay on for any other additional interaction or is that the extent of my involvement for this evening?
I, I think that's the extent of your involvement unless you wanted to just be present for the vote.
Well, actually, we're not, we're not ready to vote on it.
Okay.
Because we need to, if we were gonna adjust fees or rates, we need to do it by resolution.
Okay, so it should be, it should have been in an information segment instead of an action segment?
Yeah, and we talked about putting, next, next city council will be adopting next year's, all of our fee schedule anyways. We figured it'd be a good time to also adopt a, any, any rate changes for the power company at the same time.
Okay, yeah, so Chris, I don't know if you heard all that?
We can cut you loose, Chris.
Thanks again, Chris.
All right, thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know if we were voting just to accept the, the completed project. So, and since nobody said anything. So that's, we will just make that adjustment to the, in the minutes from this meeting. Moving now to the approval of the Power Board member, Jeff Robison. He came recommended from our Power Director, Jeremy Franklin. I know him to be very level-headed. He commits to his responsibilities and he puts forth the time and effort needed into assignments. And so with that, I'm recommending Jeff Robison for the position that is open in the Power Board.
I'll make a motion to approve for the Power Board Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. Moving now into the approval of Historic Preservation Committee members. We have two and one of them is here tonight. I sent the council in advance of this meeting, letters about both of them and opportunity to reach out by phone or email to interact and get to know them if you don't already. They're both qualified. I interviewed them both. They're interested and would like to be a part of this. But with that being said, before I made those phone calls, I did read through the ordinance on the creation of the Historic Preservation Committee and made copies of that for the council.
Can I make one comment with a concern I have? Just wanna wait. The only concern I have, and it's not the individual, but I, I want to make sure that the city has, I don't know how to put it, makes complete transparency with the election since her husband's running for council. I have nothing against her individually as a person at all, but I do have a, a problem with her husband running. Not that you're running, that's not what I'm upset. But I just want the transparency of the city is not promoting a name or addressing a name during the election cycle. And I would prefer that we added her after the election.
Okay, that being said, I have asked several times at meetings for help with different things and she was an individual who did come up to me after the meeting that we asked for a recommendation and she has background in this. And she said she didn't want it to interfere with her husband running for council but that she felt like she could really be someone that could be a positive member of that committee. And so I feel very strongly that she will be a great addition to that committee at this time and that there's no relevance to her husband running as we have several council people that have family members and spouses historically that have been on committees.
And I agree with that, but not for the year of running. And as I said, it is not the individual, it's the campaign of council. That's just, that's just my thought.
All right, and then Justin, looking back at this, there's a term of office and it breaks down into what these terms should be. So I don't know at this time if we need to designate the length of these terms at the time of appointment.
Well, I think the intent was better for this. When you first set up the committee, you'd have one, the one year, two, you know, three years and four years so that they would roll and you'd have them off. So if these people are replacing somebody, they would be a four-year term because the intent is gonna run four years, but someone will roll on and roll off or be reappointed.
That's what it's done, is it's been reappointed, you know, it can.
But they're reappointed for four years each time, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if someone is getting off early, they would serve out that term. If someone's only got three years left and that person's replaced, that person, the neighbor only have a two-year term. So if, if it's just a roll over time, then it'd be four years. If it's replacing somebody, you have, any third term would be for the length of the person.
So would those reappointments happen with new terms of new council? Because I know that some of our members have been on these committees for a lot longer than four years, but they have not been reappointed.
Well, I guess we'd go back and look and see when they first got appointed in four years and see where their term rolls out.
Okay.
I think, yeah, some people we just roll along because they don't need to reappoint. But there was a term set for each person to figure out which, quote unquote, seat. It's not pre-empted, it's from election, an elected official. But when their seat ran, then you could go back.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council, that we haven't looked at some of our committees in quite some time and that we do have ordinances. So I'm just providing the context. I'm not advocating one way or another, that we need to either follow our ordinance or change our ordinance. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve these two individuals. We can start with.
Can we do them together or do they need to be separate?
Can we do them separately?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will start with Mary Dean. I would entertain a motion to approve her for the Historic Preservation Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve Mary Dean for the Historic Preservation Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
I voted aye, my mic was off, I'm sorry.
Oh, I heard, I heard you.
Okay.
Callie got it. And then moving now to Toni Robin, Robison. She is also being recommended to be approved for the Historic Preservation Committee. All, go ahead, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Toni Robison for the Historic Preservation Committee.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. And I really appreciate people who are willing to serve on these committees. It's a big commitment and sometimes we end up with big projects and things that take quite a bit of time. And so we have a lot of people in the community that I think really don't get talked about or heard from very often, but they are kind of in the background doing a lot of great things for us all the time. So I very much appreciate your willingness to serve. Okay, moving now on to the ratification of the pool manager contract. And we do have Kirsten McCay.
McCoy.
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 Um, she's got some, some names, her, her name is Kirsten.
I have to apologize because I asked her to come. She was at the pool, working and she's like, Dan, I'm not dressed to come. And I said, just come, this is, this is who you are, this is how it goes. So my, my bad there.
And we've asked how she pronounces her name and she says it depends on if you ask her mom or her dad.
(laughing).
So.
It is, yes.
If you pronounce it close, she will answer.
I will answer, yes.
All right, did you want to take a minute, introduce yourself?
My name is Kirsten McCoy and I am so excited to be part of this community and the pool and it's just been an amazing adventure so far, just working with all of the kids, teaching lessons. We're gonna start doing that in a couple of weeks, teaching these lifeguards, life skills, life lessons. The staff is actually really amazing and we're adding more and more lifeguards. We're actually adding on hours slowly and, but this project has been huge. And if it wasn't for the community, there's no way that this could have been pulled off because it was just, it was everybody, everybody who came together. Yeah, I'm just, I feel so blessed to be able to be part of that because I have never seen that before. My background, I have been a competitive swimmer. Um, my background, I have been a competitive swimmer. I have, uh, coached competitive swimming, I've taught lessons, I've managed pools. Um, so my background from, for the past twenty-five years has been around and in pools. And, uh, I've been all over the world twice and, uh, with my husband. He's a retired marine and I'm very proud of that and that's, that's me, so, yes.
I gotta say, she has a, um, a lot of faith because the first time that she saw our pool-
Oh, (laughing).
It was when, it was when, well, the very, very, very first time, we hadn't touched it. The second time, everything was dug up and it was a hole in the ground and we had an extremely impossible deadline and, and she still took a flyer and, and, uh, so it's as much, she, she was gambling on us as much as we were gambling on her. Um, this is ratification, we went through a, a, an interview process. Um, the reason why, we don't, we don't do this normally with employees, it's an administrative act, but we're actually, um, hiring, um, Little Sharks Swim Academy, which is her LLC, um, to, to manage the pool as a contract of service, not as a traditional employee relationship. That's, that's why we felt we needed to bring it to the council, even though we went through the, the interview process, so, anyway.
Thanks.
Well, and I just wanted to say, this was a case of the right, people in the right place at the right time and she was a champ. Uh, when the going got rough, she, she didn't go anywhere, she stayed right there alongside us getting windburned and sunburned and sleepless and without food and-
It's okay.
Um-
It's, I, I honestly, when, when everything is said and done, that pool is actu, it's so amazing and it's so beautiful. And the transformation from the puddle and the construction and everything that happened. I mean, I, I literally would come in every single day and there was something different about it. And that was just, I, I, yes, I, it was, it was a lot of faith and, and it was a, a major jump and leap of faith, I guess. But I'm so, I'm so proud of this community and I'm, I'm very proud to be part of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, I'd like to move that we ratify the pool manager contract.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed?
One caveat. Marines get special privileges, isn't that correct?
Well, Semper Fi.[768.74][768.76](laughing).
We're gonna throw you in, Jim.
(laughing) Is that the special treatment you were talking about?
That's what I was looking for.
If you're gonna, can I just request that you don't tie my hands and feet like last time? But, uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's been a privilege to work with you.
Thank you, yes, yeah, you as well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've heard great things about your ability to teach kids swimming.
Oh, well, thank you, I, uh, I'm, I'm very, very passionate about it. I feel that it is, it's not just, well, it's a life lesson, it's a life skill. You, you have to be able to overcome something and this just teaches them.
All right, well, hearing-
Oh, I do have something to share.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. So one of our lifeguards, I mean, this should just make this community proud. Um, one of our lifeguards actually was with his friend in San Hollow two days ago and his friend had an accident, let's just put it that way. And anyway, he actually used his skills and did a rescue and did everything spot on. He helped him, he, he's, he's, he's a hero, he's our local hero and he's sixteen years old. So that's something to be so proud of and, uh, anyway, he's, he's working at the pool. So that's even a, a better bonus, so yes, so, yes.
He's, he's one that just got certified too.
He just got certified, well, they all just got certified. So yes, but yes, he just got certified, so it's, it's a very proud moment. So I want to do a, a spotlight on him because I just think his story is absolutely phenomenal, so, anyway.
What's his name, which guy, who was it?
Daniel.
Oh.
Daniel Bernhardy.
Yes.
Bernhardy.
Yep, so it's really great, so, anyway.
Well, thank you because, it's because of you and others that we were able to get those individuals trained, certified, so that we could open that pool.
Yes, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the heater's working.
And the heater is working, yes.
The green dragon, did I get it right?
The green dragon.
Dragon, huh?
Okay.
It was so cold. The land salons laid the dragon.
While we're, while we're talking about Wendy, um, that's who, Wendy Lauer and Kirsten have, have trained our lifeguards. There, there was no lifeguards available and there's no way we could have opened the pool without that happening.
I just didn't know if we were supposed to mention Wendy's name, but yet-
Well, we got to mention-
Wendy Lauer.
Wendy Lauer, yes.
And Kirsten McCoy.
(laughing) Thank you.
And not just run through the program, but trained exceptionally well.
Yes, they are, they, they're, uh, an amazing staff, so, thank, thank you.
Thank you. So with a unanimous vote, we will ratify our pool manager's contract. So motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten.
All right, moving now to item number fourteen, movie in the city park and this is by Breann Veder.
Hi.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you for having me again. So one of the protective factors that the coalition has been really passionate about increasing and that we're focusing on is creating pro-social activities, um, or pro-social opportunities for both youth and families in the community. With this came the idea of a movie in the park. The premise behind this is that the coalition will bring in a giant blow-up screen, play a family-friendly movie, have refreshments all free of cost to community members. When, while planning this, we've just come, run into a couple, or one small problem. From my understanding, we're allowed to be in the park until midnight due to the summer ordinance. However, the disturbing, the peace ordinance will be in effect at ten. Because it's a movie being played outside, we're gonna have to wait till dusk, which is going to be about nine o'clock, give or take ten minutes or so. And the movie will be roughly an hour and a half, which will end about ten-thirty. This is hoping everything runs very smoothly. Um, and then time for cleanup, which will hopefully put us out of the park just after eleven. And so I'm, with all that, I'm hoping that we can get special permission to do this activity for the community.
What day is this?
August third, we have tentatively scheduled-
What day of the week is that?
Oh, it's a Thursday? Thursday, actually, yeah. Yes, it's a Thursday.
Okay, if there aren't any questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the Parowin Prevention Coalition's request to have a movie in the park on August third.
I'll move that, uh, we approve the Parowin Prevention Coalition to have a movie in the park on March, on August third, twenty-twenty-three. What's that, Thursday, you say? Okay.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing no opposition, motion carries.
Party on.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all of your hard work, you're doing great, we appreciate you. Uh, moving now to item number fifteen, Lions Park and Yeta Mortensen is here for that item.
I hope we can end on a positive note, this has been great tonight, thank you so much. About sixty years ago, you're duly elected. Parowin city officials were looking for a location on which to build a community swimming pool. Citizens were excited then, as they are now, about opening a wonderful pool. In the same spirit of volunteerism you have seen over the last several weeks, Mr. and Mrs. Bart Mortensen offered a piece of property they owned across from their home for a possible location for the pool. Since it is directly across from their home and any development on it would affect their property, they asked only that if the city chose their land to build on, the land around the pool would be landscaped into a green space and park to be enjoyed by all coming to the new pool. Your predecessors evaluated their offer along with other locations being considered and determined to accept the Mortensen property with the provisions given. It did not seem to them to be an unreasonable request to surround the pool with a park. Therefore, the Parowin City Agreement was made with a handshake and the pool and park you now see in its current location is evidence of that agreement. No one dictated the size, shape, precise location, what materials were to be used, or who could work on it. City officials made those decisions. Recently, no mu, no one has told you how to upgrade the pool or what to include or exclude in its recent facelift. You made those decisions based on sound advice from experts and it's been a wonderful thing. Likewise, no one has dictated what trees, shrubs, flowers, et cetera, should be planted around the pool. The city agreement only stipulated that no buildings, parking lots, or anything other than a swimming pool and landscape green space or park be put on that portion, on that portion donated by the Mortensen family. It's still your choice to make decisions with the parameters of the longstanding legally abi, uh, legally binding agreement made by the council members before you. You can plant evergreens, water-wise trees, shrubs and flowers. You can use all the newest water-wise knowledge available to you to conserve that resource. The water to use is the same water you have used for over sixty years now. Nothing has changed. You can put a walking path around it, you can add seating. It's up to you. What cannot be done is continue trying to come up with ideas to repurpose this property. Because memories fade and agreements are not remembered, I am asking that the existing agreement be placed with the deed so no further time and money is spent by your elected successors discussing any other ideas for the use of the Parowin City Pool property. You've had several months now to consider this request. Your city attorney has said it can be done. I am putting my request in writing and ask that it be included with the minutes of this meeting and I'm asking you, Madam Mayor and City Council, to vote on this issue tonight. I've also asked all interested citizens to watch these proceedings so they are aware of the binding Parowin City Agreement, which exists concerning the property on which this pool sits. Thank you.
Do we have the letter that she submitted? Do we have that to pull up onto the screen?
Are there any questions? I can see no reason why you would not want to con, include that with the deed unless you have in mind some other use for the property. But that agreement has been binding. My legal couns, council said it's binding on this community for sixty years now. Let's get it with the deed so there's no more time and confusion over its use.
Dan, where's, is, what was Justin's? Do you say your legal counsel says it's binding to this council?
It's bind, it was a legally binding agreement and it still exists. It's, that pool and the property in the park that's there shows that it was accepted and agreed upon sixty years ago. Nothing has changed. The water is available, that was available sixty years ago.
Well, that is a question because the water they used was culinary water and then it's put into irrigation, P.I. now.
Whatever it is, if, I mean, then-
So that has changed.
The agreement has not changed. Whatever water you had then, you have now.
No, that's not entirely true.
Well, the agreement has not changed. It's, it was a legal agreement.
Because the water is different and that was-
Well, that's up to the city to deal with that issue. But the agreement that it remained for a pool and a park has not changed.
Can we do that, Dan?
Well, I would, I would defer to Justin on legal stuff, but I do believe that, um, Yeta's correct that, that, um, that we can put a deed restriction. My concern is how do you interpret it? Um, how do we interpret what it means, um, in the future when we try to do something? If we say, yeah, that's what a park is, I mean, what's a park? So there is, she's asking for language that says no buildings, that's pretty specific.
Also no parking.
And no parking?
No parking lot.
No parking lot.
Across the street from the Mortensen home, sure.
But that's, that's pretty specific, other than if you do-
Well, we already have a parking lot there with a pavilion.
We do have a parking lot with a pavilion.
With restrooms.
That the whole property is not a parking lot.
So my, my only-
They proposed at one time putting a whole parking lot north of the pool and Mr. Mortensen himself came to the committee and told them no, uh, wasn't going to happen. That was not part of the agreement.
So I, back to what I was saying, um, and it was really a question for Justin, but could we put a deed restriction on, on that property? Um, I believe we could, I'm just concerned with, with the vagueness of it and, and how do you then go about that in the future? You then still have to define things, um, I mean, to a lot of people, and, and by the way, pickleball, like, we have backed way off, we're, we're gonna solve that in the future. I don't even know if we're even considering Lions Park for pickleball or not. But to some people, putting pickleball is something you would do in a park and that's still a park. And I, I would think even if we put this deed restriction, that could still come up again in the future by a future council. That's why I'm talking about the vagueness, um, because it's how do you interpret even this language? Um, that's my only concern, I'm just answering, I'm just saying that.
Can we do it? But, uh, a future council could, I mean, can we pass a, a resolution that this council supports no building, but that, we can't, we can't restrict what the council down the road does, correct?
Yeah, you, this council does not have the ability to bind future councils on certain things. You could move to do a deed restriction, if you wanted to do a deed restriction and then that-
That's what I'm asking for.
That would bind-
Cause-
-property.
Cause what you're saying is-
It binds the couns-
We're trying to bind us by the previous council.
Yeah, that's what's happening right now, is there's an attempt to bind you guys right now by the previous council and you can't bind future councils, but certainly-
A future council could take off a deed restriction as well.
Well, that's an interesting question because the deed restriction goes to whom? So you're, remember, when you have a piece of property, you have a, you're, you're basically trying to make a servient estate and a dominant estate. The servient estate being the one that's obligated and dominant estate's the one that owns it. Typically, that's an easement, where I go across your property, you give me an easement. You're the servient estate and I, I'm the dominant estate because I have a right to drive across your property. Um, but I'm sure a deed restriction could be given, but, uh, I'm not sure. I suppose it would be, I'd have to research this, but I suppose it would be to the Mortensen. Well, I'm not sure who it'd be to, because he's deceased, right?
He is, family members are still-
Yeah, so, um, again, I'm, I'm never a fan of binding future councils to anything, but, uh, you certainly have authority to do a deed restriction if that's what you decide to do and we can figure out how to get it done with the title company.
I'm saying the agreement was made in order for you to even have that property. It's evident that they agreed to that sixty years ago, it's already been agreed to.
We've had other properties-
Then sixty years ago, they should have put a deed restriction on it.
Absolutely, they should have.
So they didn't, and so legally, it's not binding, but you can do-
We also have other- We also have other properties that's been given to the city, like the Meeks Park, that was donated.
Correct, correct. I just want to make it clear. Legally, I don't believe there's any obligation to do this legally. I'm not here to tell you what to do morally. I can't, that's what pays you guys the big bucks. You're the ones that determine things morally. Legally, there's no deed restriction. It would be a violation of statute of frauds. It's not enforceable. What you guys choose to do, statute of frauds, so you're all looking. Statute of frauds is not fraud. Statute of frauds is a term that involves a piece of property. If I go to sell a piece of property to you, and you and I shake hands, and I say, "I'll buy your one acre here for fifty thousand dollars," you say, "I'll sell it to you," and we shake hands, and then we go our separate ways, and I come back a month later and say, "Okay, here's the fifty thousand dollars," and you say, "I changed my mind." I then sue you and say, "You agreed to sell me the property for fifty thousand dollars." A court will not enforce that under statute of frauds, under Title 25.
What if that is first?
I'm not done talking. Any transition of property, transfer of property from a person A to person B, has to be in writing. And the terms and conditions of that agreement have to be in writing. And if they're not, then it's not enforceable. And the reason for that is, and it's been going on since England, the reason for that is that you'd get people to come in, you know, in England time before the king and say, "He agreed to sell me the property." "No, I didn't." "Yes, I did." It's not in writing, and the judge doesn't know who to believe. So, the law was passed that says if you want to do a transaction in writing, or sale of goods over five hundred dollars, or a guarantee on a loan for somebody else, there's several things. You have to comply, put it in writing. If you don't, it violates the statute of frauds, and by violating the statute of frauds, the court won't enforce it. So, that's where that's at. It's not fraud, it's just called the statute of frauds. Sorry, I'm done now.
Sorry, due to the interruption. My point is, if you gave a piece of property on the condition that it be used for a pool and a park, and the city accepted that property but didn't pay you the agreement, how would you feel about it? That was a legally binding contract that they made, the Mortenson family and the city. The city knew what the purchase price was. If they don't build, put any buildings, just keep it a green space surrounding and beautifying the pool. Do what you would do if it were your, if you were in the same position. If this were across the street from your existing home.
I'm wondering if there's a, if there's a, I don't want to call it a compromise, but I'm wondering if one of the things, because I don't know, I'm sensing reticence. I'm trying to, because this is a totally legislative type decision, so I try not to get too much into that. But I wonder if, I know one of the things that has caused this to be such an emotional issue was it was the agreement to allow the Head Start building put in. I'm wondering if what we do is we remove the Head Start building. We actively commit to the Mortensons to get that thing transferred, and we figure out a way to go about doing that. We do a resolution, like this being required, there's being requested, but a resolution stating what we think that the purpose of this park is, and we get that building moved out of there. I don't think we have any intention to do anything with it. There was a consideration about pickleball for a while, but I'm wondering if we get rid of that building, we make a resolution saying what our intent is at this time? I don't know, that's just an idea. If you're not comfortable with a deed restriction, I'm just, I'm trying to find middle ground, but I don't know.
And the three points I have been thinking about over the past few weeks is, when he was saying maybe there's some meat in the middle, is, so like the pavilion building was built, and that's a building and a structure and concrete and all of that, but there weren't any concerns about that. And so, what if it's something more like this percentage would be grass and vegetation requiring water, you know, not to exceed an allocation depending on, because there are just so many factors with things that need to be watered anymore. So, maybe carving out, you know, what would need to be grass and vegetation, what could be no more than this in hard surface? Because in the situation of the pavilion, for instance, that was a needed amenity, and there was no objection to that, and it's a big, you know, people love it. They have their family reunions there, it's really nice, but, I mean.
It's in the spirit of a park.
And so, I'm just, and then my third note is, you know, just moving forward, different families that say, "We gave this to the city, and now we, just like the Mortensons didn't want done with it, what was done with it, and now we're just chasing these forevermore." And so, I feel like, and I've been all along the way, just really trying to figure out where we go in a way that we all feel just great about, because I do think there is a solution, and a place we can come to, and also very much sympathize with your position as well as the councils. But, like, I'm thinking ahead, you know, when we're all not here, and, you know, looking at that, and I'm on a committee called PROS, which is Parks, Recreation and Open Spaces, and I value open space. That is something I value. And so, I think, you know, when I learn how much it costs to keep parks watered and groomed and fertilized and chemicals and all of that, and hourly wages and such, I think about, again, we've talked about it, maybe a percentage is grass, vegetation, maybe a percentage is hard surface for activities. I mean, things like hopscotch and basketball, I mean, these are all things that the community would enjoy and placemake if place making were done. Just for instance, the individual in the community that put up the volleyball net, now there are people playing volleyball every single night. That park's been used more than I've seen it used in years, just because somebody put a net out there. And so, when I think about it, I think about what could make that park most appreciated and used by the community. And so, it's like a really hard line of what can't be there and can be there. The pavilion's a perfect example of, that's okay to be there, but the Head Start building isn't okay to be there. The volleyball net's okay to be there, even though all the grass is now dead underneath it, but we want to be sure there's grass. And so, I think it's, I almost feel like we need to have, and I've also, we've talked about this, and I like, you know, everyone knows I'm a big fan of finishing the loop around it, it's a half mile course, and doing a fit trail with an education component. I've been trying to do that, you know, as a citizen for quite some time. I think it would be so enjoyed and appreciated by the community, and I think that was the intention of the park being donated to the city.
Or outdoor spaces.
Outdoor space, outdoor, you know, I was calling it for a little bit an outdoor recreation center, because it would be a place made for people to come out and enjoy and be there. So, I guess what I'm proposing is, you know, something that's a little clearer than just, you know, green space and park. Because every time I look at green spaces and parks online in different cities, parks come in all shapes and sizes, some don't have a blade of grass with their parks.
Knowing him, and conversing with him, his specific concern was north of the pool, directly across from his home, and that portion right around the pool. Did it not be used for anything other than outdoor space and a pool? You know, and that green space, you want a definition for what green space is. I think.
So, if something could be worked out on that Head Start facility like the city manager suggested, would that help?
Oh, definitely, that would help, yeah.
I guess we're talking compromise.
Another building that has nothing to do with the pool or a park. What keeps the city from putting another building on it? That's why I wanted it attached to the deed. So, there's no confusion. Morally, it's right, it's the right thing to do. It was, the city accepted it, in the spirit it was given, that should be honored. No buildings there.
All these buildings have been by separate entities, you know, not the city. Like, the Lions Club built that pavilion, and it became the Lions Park, named after that.
Yeah.
And so, the city didn't promote any of these. They were just trying to, you know, these organizations.
I know the Head Start building, it was, well, the city owns it, we can do with it what we want. So, that's what I was told.
So, basically, what I'm, from what I'm understanding from you, is the sliver, the thorn in the side that has created all of this is that Head Start building.
That's.
That is what has started the bad feelings, the going back and forth.
Part of it. Again, Mr. Mortenson himself had to stop that whole area from being turned into a parking lot. And that would be absolutely against his wishes.
When you say "whole area," you're telling the.
Everything north of the pool.
Okay, so not everything south, just north.
North of the pool was, they wanted to put a parking lot there. He came to the council himself and said, "Not so, can't be." That's not what you agreed to.
And I do feel the bathroom building is a benefit and an amenity to that park, and that's a building. The bathrooms.
The bathrooms are needed for, they're needed in a park.
So, I mean, that's why I'm saying, so if we did a, you know, we did a deed restriction that said "no buildings," I mean, in that case, there wouldn't have been a bathroom. So, that's why I'm saying it's the language of that.
Language is, we can work on, but I do, I am holding to the spirit of what he donated. And that was for outdoor space around the pool. And a pool, a place for that pool. You can enlarge the pool all you want. That's in keeping with the agreement that the city made with him. But nothing north of the pool.
I was going to ask you to repeat that.
No, it is, it's up to the council to do that. I'm not dictating how large.
And I mean, I agree, the bathroom's needed, it's just if the previous council had said a deed restriction of no buildings, there would have been a fight to get the pavilion and the bathroom. And so, and we all really, I think, I don't know, I shouldn't say we all, I think the bathroom and the pavilion are wonderful. So, I mean, but if that deed restriction had been in place back then, there wouldn't have been able to be a bathroom or a pavilion.
Well, I have a problem with the deed restriction, because who knows what's going to happen with water and everything else twenty years from now or thirty years from now?
They didn't know sixty years ago, Sharon, what would happen to it. We've gone through cycles of drought and lack of water. Somehow, the city's been able to maintain it. It's a beautiful park.
Our federal government is putting so many restrictions to even local governments and states. I mean, I'm, I love the park, but we have to think of how much it, what it's going to do to the city to tie the hands.
Water will be an issue. It is an issue.
It's always been an issue here.
And, well, not to the extent it is now. We're under the mandate of an underground water management plan, the potential, which has changed everything. I know. Sam knows. Everybody knows it has anything to do with underground water.
I don't want that piece of property up there to be brown, because we don't have water to water the green. And I don't want it to be in Congress.
The state of Utah's passed more water laws in the last three years than I've seen in the last twenty, and it's all about tightening the purse strings on water. And they recognize it, and, you know, we fought, you know what I've done for the last two years to fight putting in pressurized meters in the pressurized irrigation systems. And if we hadn't fought that battle, we'd be a four million dollars in debt in putting in meters. So, I don't know, I just think it's interesting, because you've all said what parks are. I think you both hit on it, actually. It's, everybody has a definition of what a park is. Minnesota Central Park in New York's completely different from parks down here.
An outdoor area.
So, I mean, your definition of park, my definition of park, and every person in here might have a different definition of what they consider to be a park.
I'm willing to work on the wording with you so that we can come into agreement, because my family is the other half of that agreement, and I think we have the right to at least review what wording you put on it. But something definitely needs to be done, and getting the school off the property is a start, for sure. And then maintain it as an outdoor. Just no parking lots, no major buildings. I don't want an office building there, I didn't want a school there. Morally, think about what is right if it were your family involved, and you still live across the street from it, and feel the consequence of decisions that have been made. I'm just saying, it was binding then, let's come to some resolution where it honors the agreement and make sure that we don't put other buildings there. It doesn't mean that the bathroom wasn't, you know, that's part of a park, you do need a bathroom, certainly.
Well, and I don't know, I maybe didn't communicate that well. I'm more saying if there had been an agreement at that time that no buildings could have been built, we could have had a council fighting to put a building in that was a pavilion and a bathroom. And so, that's why I'm saying we need to be careful with the wording, because those were things that did happen that were needed and would be considered in probably anyone's mind as buildings.
What other organization can come in and place something on the former Mortenson piece of property? Can the Lions Club come in again and say, "We want another pavilion"?
Well, I mean, anybody could come in and ask for something. It is owned by the city, the city would have to approve anything like that.
And that's down the line. I don't, you know, this is, I'm trying to protect that portion that is from, you know, surrounding the pool that was donated by Bart and Vera.
And I feel like we're, you know, close, we're having a good conversation, and, I mean, if any of the council have any suggestions or ideas that we haven't already talked about, you know, we're obviously trying to find a middle ground here.
I guess I'm trying to look at compromise, and if that building, that Head Start building would help, it is a mobile building.
It would help.
And when I had that conversation early in that term.
It'd have to be some agreement. I mean, we can't just move it and then be still facing that same.
Is there a legal agreement between the city and Head Start?
I don't know, is there a contract? There is, and I approached them when I was first elected to find out if there was some room to move it, and they said they would be open to discussion, but a big part of it was the real estate around the school to be able to move something over there, or find something else to offer them. And so, at that time, they weren't really ready, because they said they wanted to see what the new building over at the school, and the way the student population, especially in the elementary school, was increasing. They wanted a little more time on that, but we could talk to them again, certainly, and they definitely weren't, they were open to a conversation.
Well, I agree, the Head Start's important, and we just, you can't just kick them off and leave them with nowhere to go. They've got, you've got to have a plan. I mean, they've got to go somewhere.
Well, and they usually do try to co-locate on school property, elementary school property, because it just makes sense to go from Head Start to kindergarten, that progression, it's good for the kids. Most of the Head Starts that I know of are located on the same grounds as the elementary, so. But it's going to be work, it's going to be working with SUU, working with the school district, but I think they're open to it.
They're open to it. There was no negative, there wasn't any negative feedback, it was, "Yeah, we'd be open to figuring this out." And we really just need to look at it and come to them with something that they would be interested in, in a solution. I think everyone's very solution oriented here tonight and in general.
Certainly, have nothing against Head Start, all for it, just not there. Absolutely.
Somebody said that about pickleball.
But the, you know, the neat thing.
I have said nothing about.
About pickleball is sending that letter out and finding that isn't where, you know, that's needed to be. I mean, it was an easy pivot, and so, I think there's just aspects of this process that have been really positive. About pickleball is sending that letter out and finding that isn't where, you know, that's needed to be, I mean, it was an easy pivot, and so, I think there's just aspects of- of this process that have been really positive, and I think we need to continue with that momentum, um, and, I mean, I- I don't know that we can-
But I don't think we tonight can vote to put this on a deed.
No.
Yeah, I think we need to-
I think we need to do talking and-
Well, I think if you decide to do something like that, you need to give me a heads up, so I can-
Yeah.
And a title company heads up, so we can take a look at it, see what can or cannot even be done.
Enable it.
Okay.
And turn it over to Justin.
You know, and even have, you know, a few of us together, I know I was just asked to have a meeting with, um, the school board and some other members, a couple of council, and I just got that notice this afternoon, and, you know, that'll be an opportunity to talk about that as well, so, there's, there are a lot of moving parts.
As long as it's being considered and not just tabled, let's talk about it, let's get something resolved on this, so that it's no longer an issue of contention or- or, uh, bad feelings or anything else, that- that's the last thing we want. But we do want to enjoy that piece of property as an outdoor, an outdoor space, so, however we can come up with that, would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Do we move to continue negotiations with the Mortensons, or do you wanna just table it?
Well, if we table it, we need to direct our council to do his legal magic and come up with a- with a compromise that we can-
But I don't know if we know what that compromise is.
Well, that's- that's- I don't come up with a compromise, you guys come up with one.
I think we would need to have a meeting and then put something together and then bring it back to legal and then back to the council.
That would be great.
Okay.
Say that again, what?
We could have a meeting, uh, you know, obviously two council, myself, you, Mortensons, um, as long as it's not a forum.
We could do work meetings for all of it.
For a work meeting, we could even do that, we all love the extra work meetings whenever we need to have those, as long as they take. So, that would be something, sounds like the council would be willing to do a work meeting around it, and that way, we could come up with something and then kind of bring it more, I think, prepared. As tonight, I think we're all, we're all open, but we need to have quite a bit more discussion, does that, does that feel right and feel good to you?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you for listening.
You're welcome. So, I think we're gonna have to have a motion to table it, if I- I would entertain that now.
I'll make a motion to-
Or what?
Table the Lions Park and continue to discuss the issue to make-
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
To make, uh-
Callie had a suggestion, there might be a more appropriate way to handle it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There we go, 'cause we don't really like to table things, let's move to have a work meeting. Very nice, okay, so, I would entertain a motion-
But that defines what you're gonna do.
To move this item to a work meeting, however you'd like to word that.
Okay, I'll make a new motion to create a- a work meeting for the Lions Park to come up with some, some kind of an agreement and- and, uh, compromise with the Mortensen family. Is that okay?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing no opposition, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. So, now, we get to move into a work meeting, starting with item number sixteen, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up by the elected officials and staff. And it's been three weeks, so I don't remember which side to, I'm starting on, do you remember where we started last time, three weeks ago?
I think you did over there.
I don't know, we don't care where.
Okay, we'll start on this side then.
Uh, we've had, uh, no meetings, uh, I did have a discussion with Dan, and, uh, Dan, do- do we update the council on the airport?
Yeah, I have that on mine, I can do that right now.
Okay, uh, before you- before you get there, uh, also, did, uh, we needed to recognize Judy Shears and her major award.
What award did you get?
Are you spoiling something?
No, well, it needs to be mentioned in council.
Come on, Judy. Woo, woo, is that what you, what you- Good job.
Thanks, Judy, jeez.
Way to put it, she loves to be recognized in public.
Oh, no, I mean, I- I get- I get tired of, uh-
Things happening and not being said.
Well, we have an outstanding staff.
Mm-hmm.
And they need the recognition-
They do.
That they deserve. And, uh, a national award from a national organization is significant, and it should be a big deal.
But you should have made her walk up to the podium.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't hear it.
So, you might have to come-
Judy, please come to the podium and-
To the podium, so it's properly in the minutes, and those at home can hear.
And those of us that have a hard time hearing can hear.
But what was that, I didn't hear what you got. Yeah, I can't hear, I can't hear you, it's part of it. Excuse me? I love to embarrass you.
You are, it's the Certified Public Finance Investment Manager, it's a- a national recognition award.
Manager.
Good job.
Awesome, thank you too much.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan, break the bad news to them.
We are in the, we are currently in the whiplash of the federal government budget game. There's a reason why the airport runway is not in the middle of being constructed. Been on our capital facilities plan for the airport for some time, that's this year, we've gone through all these steps, we've talked about it in this meeting a bunch. We have hired a contractor, we have gone through all the red tape to get everything lined up, all of that has to be done for us to- to actually officially apply with the FAA for the grant, which they've told us is good to go. Now that we're actually ready to get cash, the FAA is saying, "We don't have any money, yet." And it's like that thing on your computer that just has a little thing that's just spinning, um, that could change any day or any week. They, um, this is- is something that will come from their contingency funds, meaning they have more projects than they actually have money for, and is, and then a lot of project doesn't, projects don't happen, or they don't use all the funds, if those funds are put in, then they go ahead and fund projects like this. So, we're kind of just in this crazy wait, wait mode, everything is ready to go, but we actually need FAA to give us the green light, and green, in this case, is the color of cash. So, um, we wait, the problem is, is you can't just do asphalt year round in Parowan, Utah. There is a d- actual timeline when they shut off the plants and Sunrock will not, will not, um, actually do the, do the work for us, and we have to wait until next year, until the season of doing asphalt. So, we're basically in a pattern of holding, and if this unlocks and the money's there and is good, then it'll continue. There's a drop dead date, we're looking around August fifteenth. If this happens to clear out before then, we're back on track, we completely redo our runway. Um, if it goes past that time, then we have some unknowns, um, specifically, our bid is only good for so long, and, um, if they will extend the contract, um, into next year, which is hard for a contractor to do, because prices are unknown next year, if you're a contractor on a multimillion dollar project, would you feel comfortable saying, "Yeah, it, the price is good for next summer"? That's essentially what we would be asking them to do, if they're not willing to extend it at the exact price, then it, we press the reset button on that whole part of it. So, fingers crossed that this whole federal game, the guy at the FAA said, "I know this sounds slightly crazy to you guys, but it's just another day of working at the FAA for us." So, that's where we're at, that's our holding pattern, and we hope it all gets figured out by one month from now. If not, we'll be exploring options and, um, probably tying ourselves up with red tape again, so, that, that, sum it up, Jim?
Much more articulate than I was gonna say. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have no reports, but I do have something to say. There's a lot of rumors going around town that Jim and I have voted no for the pool. That is a false statement. We voted no for a two-week wait, because that Monday, I talked to our city manager, and he wanted the two weeks to find out how much everything was going to cost. So, when I voted no, I was doing it with the recommendation from our city manager. I have been for this pool for a year and a half, when Matt and I met Kim Skinner out and discussed what needed to be done, and I reported it back to the mayor at that time. But I would appreciate if there is any talking going on, that you complete the sentence and not just the parts that sounds good to you. And I'm not looking at anybody, please don't take that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. On a different note, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the RAP tax that, um, Callie and I have just started working on again, from, we started this last year, missed a deadline, blah, 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 that's in the past. And now, we're moving forward with, um, the proper proceedings in order to get that on the November ballot again. But I just wanted to give an update as to, people have asked, "Well, what is it, what would it go to?", and there's kind of like a lot of moving parts, but essentially, RAP stands for Recreation Arts and Parks. And I'm just gonna read, 'cause I created this little ballot from last year, I wrote up a really good little thing, I'm just gonna read it, 'cause I think it kind of just spells it out, um, what it is, and then hopefully, that'll clear up any confusion as to what it is. So, I had just written, "Parowan City has a wonderful heritage, and we believe recreation, arts, and parks," which is short for RAP, um, or is the long part for RAP, "are integral parts to our heritage, with the beautiful heritage park and other surrounding parks in our community, along with our growing trail system, and the growth that we are seeing in our recreational programs, we see these areas as part of our heritage. They created many, they create many opportunities for families and residents to interact and create lasting memories. To keep, uh, well-provided, to keep and provide well-maintained parks and trails, cultural activities, and meaningful recreation programs in Parowan City, we see the need to enact a recreational, recreational arts and parks tax. The RAP tax is- is a sales tax, it is not a property tax, and it would be paid at the point of purchase on all sales that are eligible purchases within Parowan City. The RAP tax would be an increase of point one percent, to the sales tax rate, increasing it from six point one percent to six point two percent. This equals one penny for every ten dollars spent. Since it is a sales tax, Parowan City residents will not own, will not be the only ones that would pay the RAP tax. Anyone who shops in Parowan City will be required to pay that tax. This is important for our city to consider now, for how Parowan is the gateway to Brinehead, to Cedar Breaks, and to the Iron County Fair Arena. The RAP tax will help Parowan City do more than what it has been currently offered in our city, and will help keep up with the prudent replacement and maintenance of existing parks, trails, et cetera. Some of the funding may be used for capital improvement and operations of public-owned and operated amenities. And I'm just listing things, this is not limited to, or anything like the parks, the trails, and bike paths, playing fields, the swimming pool, museums, festivals, concerts in the park, um, art programs, and our community theater. So, that's just kind of a, like, a little snapshot of what the RAP tax, if it is passed in November on the ballot, could do for our city. Um, I want it to be, I don't want it to be like something that's negative, and it's like, oh, they're imposing another tax. It, you actually have, the council will have to form a committee, and then that committee decides where that money, how that money is divided. Um, there's a lot of different ways that we could do it, so it's not the council, or the mayor, or the city manager just saying, "This is where all the money goes." There is a- a committee that's comprised of committee, community members, coun- a council member, and such, so. Do you guys have any questions? I kinda said blah, spewed stuff.
It's just the parts, arts, and recreation, right?
Yes, rap, yep, recreation, arts, and parks.
That's what I've been saying.
Yes, and so, it's not, I've heard a lot of different rumors out there, and I'm not even going to address any of them, just, this is what it is. You can go online and Google RAP tax, and there is a lot of information out there. Callie and I are working on getting some information up on our website, so that, um, people can go on there and look at what it is, you can submit, um, arguments for and against. There's just a lot of things that we're gonna be rolling out in the next, uh, couple of months, so that the public knows, 'cause I want people to know about it. Um, and then we'll also produce a pamphlet and stuff once everything's in order that way, but I just want everybody to know that this is, moving forward, this is what it is. It's, I feel like it's a positive thing for our community to help us maintain what we've got, and also, um, bring on maybe other art programs and things that community members are wanting to do within our community. And where the city doesn't have a budget-lined item for that, this would be, um, an easier way to help bring more things into Parowan.
And we're on track for that, I know that I was gonna help and I have been all consumed, I apologize.
Yeah, you've kind of just fallen off the world, no, I'm just kidding.
But are we good, is there anything you need, Callie, Rochelle, I mean-
I don't think so, not right now, right?
Let me help if needed.
Okay.
Um, even if I need to go intimidate the county clerk's office, whatever you need, you're guys.
We've done, um, they've done what they need so far for us, in a timely manner.
They're off.
And so, we have what we need from them, um.
Okay.
Yeah, we learned a lot from last year, um, they don't really have a very good, um, the state doesn't have a very good checklist, they have a checklist, but it's missing things on it. So, if you missed a timeline, we didn't know about, that's how we missed things last year, is it wasn't on their checklist.
Something in code, but not on the checklist, and-
Yes, and so, it was, we're navigating that, and I think we have a little bit better handle, um, on it this year, so, um-
There were tears shed.
I know, and I don't like to cry, but I did even cry in council meeting, yeah, it's, it was what I am.
But, I mean, they pay at other places in other cities, when you go to Cedar, you pay RAP tax, when you go, "How do they have such nice things?", a lot of it is because they collect that RAP tax.
Well, Washington County, St. George, like, everybody, Cedar City, everybody around us has the RAP tax, just, um, Parowan doesn't, and-
And when we go to write for grants, we often don't have match money, but if we had the RAP tax, we would have match money.
It would really-
It's just a really good thing, it looked like Justin was nodding a minute ago, he's, what did you wanna say about the RAP? And really, it's your language and communication in the community about the RAP tax, if you say, "Oh, that, those rotten scoundrels are trying to raise our taxes", it's gonna go over like a lead balloon, but if you say, "The RAP tax is wonderful", a lot of good comes from it, and it, we're in the right place as a city to- to do that now.
And I really wish I could change it from RAP tax to something different, 'cause you just hear the word tax and you're like-
No.
Like, I cringe myself, like, I- I hear tax, I'm like, err, I hear price increases, err, like, I hate it.
I thought you were gonna say you weren't a rap fan, rap music or something.
I really don't like rap music either, but, but, um, and then, also, I just wanna thank everybody who did everything that they did on the pool. It looks amazing, it's wonderful, I'm glad that the heater's working, 'cause it was really cold.
It's beautiful.
Um, it's beautiful, I've, um, getting, I hate that school's about ready to start next month, I just can't even think about that, but I've been working down at the school on some stuff, and, um, everybody- some stuff and um everybody's just like, we love that the pool's open, thank you. And I was like, hey, it was not even like five percent me. Like, it was, it was honestly a hundred percent of the community. Um, Dan, the mayor, I think every time I walked, I went by, your car was there. Um, you did a tremendous amount. So I just wanted to thank you too, because everybody's just wonderful and this community is wonderful. And that's why I love living here. Everybody is just great. So, okay, I'll be done.
Thank you.
When's the RAP tax have to be in submitted?
Like, my deadline to submit it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, by sixty-five days before November twenty-first.
Okay, so that's taken into account the new election.
Yes. So November twenty-first is the new election day.
Yeah.
The general election. And so we have, yes, we have it mapped out.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate what you've done on that, Rochelle. Uh, Shade Tree Committee met and uh they're working on a budget now, or a grant, excuse me, grant now. And that needs to be submitted by the twenty-fourth, at least signed by Ryan Johnson. And what they're trying, and so they, they've asked me to make sure the council understands that this is a matching grant. And in our budget, it says twenty-five hundred dollars is what's matching. But they are going for more. And so it will be, I think, ten. And so some of that can be in kind and some can, you know, and so they'll work through that. But they just wanted to make sure that the councils understands that they are, they are going for uh more than the five thousand, that they're going for ten. And so hopefully, but they've had a lot of hours and a lot of ways that they can make that up in kind, so I think that it'll be fine.
So if that grant gets approved, then would need to bring it to this body for approval to sign it. And at that point, would know what we're on the hook for, would have a picture of what the in-kind is versus the cash, which is gonna come out of our budget and all that, right?
Right. There'll be more than twenty-five hundred, if they get it. Is that correct?
Well, and Judy and Justin and I met this weekend, line item from the budget, things that we paid for last year that we could easily, you know, put into that. And um I think the Shade Tree already has allocated five thousand dollars, so...
I'm just saying, before we would, uh, sign the grant, we would wanna make sure that it's either within budget and a part of our plan. And if it's anything outside of that, we would wanna consider how we were gonna take care of that.
Yes.
Okay. But they also wanna make sure they understood that it isn't gonna go just towards Meeks Park. This is for all trees throughout the community, wherever it's needed and, and any place that it's needed. So. Um, and speaking of Meeks Park, we, um, there were, the water was not running in there and it was starting to seep a little bit, but the, the farmers, because they were doing a maintenance on their screen, they, they worked with us to uh turn some water in there so that we're, we're fine for now. Meeks Park is filling up right now. Well, it is full and overflowing and so, but we are working on that as far as ideas and ways to secure permanent source of water to keep uh that park or that pond, you know, and that fish in the, you know, in the condition that it needs to be in, so. Um, I wanted to mention that uh, that the Fourth of July was, was great. The parade was good, the fireworks, having fireworks after so many years was really, I think, you know, a good experience. The park games were good, I think, everything. I think the Fourth of July was great in Perilone. And the, the pool was open on the Fourth of July. And I think that's a great accomplishment. Everybody's appreciated it. And I just wanna personally thank everyone, the generous donors, the men, the, just the, the army of volunteers, the, everybody that contributed to this to make it happen. I know that when we, you know, I set the date for the Fourth and everybody thought it wouldn't happen. The reason, I have reasons. I'm a person that I set goals, because if you don't, you don't attain anything. And I knew if we didn't get that open on the Fourth, that the kids and the community wouldn't really reap the benefits from it this season, 'cause it's a very short season as it is. And there's a lot more to accomplish. I mean, the pool's open, but there's some other things to finish, but it is, I mean, I don't even like to use the term the old pool. That is, there is no such thing as the old pool anymore. That is a new amenity that's going to offer a lot of opportunities for different venues, options of different gatherings, different functions, different, just, it's just gonna be a great venue for this community. It's, it's totally different. And the vision that it's taken to get that, I commend Dan. I mean, when we were looking at this, and I was very concerned because we didn't, you know, about the money, because we'd be able to tap into that impact money, we had to do some new construction. And we sat down, if you remember Dan, in the dairy freeze and decided, you know, ways that if we went outside that footprint to be able to tap into that impact money. And so it's come together better than we ever envisioned. Me, I didn't think it would ever uh be this good. And it's only because of all that have worked on that. It's one of the greatest Public Works projects that I've seen in Perilone in my lifetime. And it's, you know, that just shows, I had a uh son-in-law, took him up there and he was been mayor over in Circleville and, and he's the superintendent over there in Payute. And anyway, he, the school district, and he says, I told him about everything that transpired up there. And he says, you know, we tried to do a waterline project and we needed a backhoe and the guy come and said, you know, the days of volunteerism are dead, you're gonna get your own backhoe. And when I told him what happened there and all the donations, everything and pointed everything out, he couldn't believe it. He says, this is a testament to what volunteerism can do and how a community can come together. And uh, you know, I, I am sorry. I feel, I, I, this has been a great uniting effort for the community. And I've, everybody I've talked to has been so happy, so positive, so grateful for this. And I guess I, I just feel bad when, when, for those that maybe haven't understood and come and joined in with celebrating and to recognize the great accomplishment and the good it is for Perilone. And I, I was, I just feel bad if there's any negativism that comes out of it, because I did apologize. I took all responsibility that I possibly could, because we went through a, we went through a, a process of a, of evolution that came to this. This pool would not, it isn't what it, isn't the old pool, like I said. And it wouldn't be what it is had we not gone through this evolutionary process and been able to accomplish this, 'cause what we did enabled this to be what it is now. And that, and allowed people to show what they can really do when it's, everybody comes together and, and is united in a common, you know, cause. And I, my apology was heartfelt, genuine, honest, and I'm sorry that there's those that didn't recognize and take it that way and feel, and be able to accept it and, you know, and be able to accept that apology. Uh, because this has meant a lot to me. Three and a half plus years of going through, and I've expressed this before, it has really taxed me. I've really am always concerned about what is in the best interest for the community and the citizens of Perilone. And I, and that's why when this came to this point and I saw this is the, what we needed to do. And I did make, maybe some felt was unfounded or unreasonable request of the Fourth of July, but I knew that had to be that way in order for us to have it. And look what's happened. That is a marvelous venue. And everybody needs to be recognized and thanked that had, so much. I mean, if anybody, I mean, being up there and watching that evolve and the people, the armies of people that were there and the, what the gra- gracious donations, it's unbelievable. It doesn't happen. You talk to people in other communities and they are astounded. This is a great example of what Perilone can do when they come together. So again, I hope of my heartfelt that people will accept my apologies, if I have done anything that they feel is wrong, which, but there were reasons. And there was, for some reasons, people don't understand and we did what we knew that we had to do at the time. And things evolved the way that they should. And I'm, I'm so grateful for that. And I guess all I can offer, if they don't accept my apology, I can offer my blood, that's all I can do. I'm sorry. But it's great and I appreciate what has happened up there. It's just, I get texts and I get people sending pictures and they just, you know, I was gonna read one, because the way he, he described it is a, is when you do things like this is, is what really tests the character of a community and shows the integrity of a community. And we, this community is great. And it's a labor of love for me and that's why I do it. I don't do it for any personal satisfaction. I, I do it because I want to serve the community and I love this community. So I, I appreciate everybody that helped this come about. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yep, I have a few things. Um, and I say this in jest, everybody's talking about the pool like it's done. Ha, Dave, Dave said he, Dave talked about it not being done. Um, in the next week, and, like, it, we're on the same time crunch.
But it's open.
But it's open.
It's open.
Oh, yeah.
It's open on the Fourth.
It is open and we have an equal, equally hard push to get it ready for our grand opening. Um, we are shooting for twenty-fourth, grand opening. We're wanting to do a ribbon cutting. We're wanting to have a party. We have a, a committee. Um, we're, we're gonna do our best to invite everybody and, and have a good time. Between now and then, we've gotta put stucco on the building. We've gotta roof the building. We've gotta, our gates, we're a temporary patch job. Um, they've gotta be, the new gates that are being fabricated with self-closing um hinges and all that stuff have to be installed. Um, the heater, the green, the Green Dragon, we call it, it's now the Green Dragon, because it breathes fire. It is breathing fire and running. Um, we're trying to dial that in. We actually moved it, had to completely replummet. Um, and we have, we have gone through a whole melodrama of the Green Dragon all by itself. But it is, it is pumping out heat and we're heating the pool. Um, we're, we're gonna do some more concrete in the front so that we don't have a trip hazard, so we don't have ADA problems or drainage problems. So our concrete guys are coming back next week. Plus, we have to finish, we have to fix the sidewalk that was totally taken out on the east side. We have to finish landscaping. We can't do the landscaping till we finish some of the concrete stuff. Um, we're gonna, we gotta build three pavilions and assemble those. Um, shade structures are gonna go in next week, which are gonna go over the, what we call the peanut, which is a piece of, a peanut shaped, um...
Mister Peanut.
Yeah, Mister Peanut. Uh, eventually, we, we hope to be able to put mist on it. I don't know if that'll happen this season or not. Um, piping, we've had, as this pool has got up and running and it's now seeing the stress of a, of daily operation, we've had, we've had different issues come up that we've had to order parts for. Um, we've had almost a, a daily little drama of this breaking or that failing. And, you know, the, the system sat for a long time, plus it was old before it sat for a long time. So we're working through those things. We still have additional electrical runs that need to be done. Um, one of those is necessary to get the drinking fountain up and running. The concession room, um, we just got the roll-up doors delivered today, but they have to be installed. Um, when the health department was here, when we were, we were getting ready to get temporarily open, um, they said, you're gonna have a whole punch list of items before you can start serving food out of that place. So I'm, I'm setting that aside, other than putting the roll-up doors. We get through our grand opening, then we can look at a punch list of, of, of getting the concessions. Things like you have to have a, um, you have to have a plan for dealing with pest control and, and you, we have to have sinks and, and piping and, and, and air gaps and um hand washing sinks separate than this and that. They have a whole rule before you can serve food. So, but, but we've got, we'll work on that. Um, we still gotta finish swapping out the temporary stalls that we're putting in the girls' locker room. There was a part that was bent. Dave Harris is on that, working on it. We gotta put, changing tables in the bathrooms, soap dispensers gotta be, I mean, there is a, still a big list that's all gonna happen. That, you're gonna see, see that place continue to change every day between now and, um, and the grand opening. Um, we wanna celebrate and have a good time. I can tell you that that pool, the kids don't care that we're still under construction and everybody's just blown away. Today, there was enough kids that we were panicking to get another lifeguard there, because it is full. Everybody is just loving it, especially now that there's heat in the pool. Um, I think, as much as it has been very taxing, we have prioritized it, uh, uh, in front of really a, a lot of other projects. Um, I think that, I really do think it can bring the community together. And I think that, um, everybody's loving it. So anyways, moving on from the pool, airport runway, we already talked about that. Flood channel, um, we finally have water that is getting down minimal. In fact, they're almost taking all of what's coming down the canyon into the irrigation, but not quite. So we still have water going over six hundred. It's minimal, the road is open. Um, but we've gotta start doing the work on the flood channel that we were not able to do. We were able to widen it and put some slope on. We dodged a major bullet. Um, we, we were not able to get riprap in before the high water came. We dodged a major bullet that we did not have. We, there was some bad problems of, of, of um things starting to overexcavate. The, we almost lost the farmer's irrigation pipe. It, it was two days, working all day and, and i- into dark in order to salvage that and keep that. That would've lost their whole farm season, it would've been horrible. That pipe is, still needs to be protected, not to mention, we still need to put the riprap in that'll, that'll, that'll help the homes. Um, they lost a private bridge on Down Out, that's actually specifically in the county before it comes back into the city. But it was just this erosion problem in that potato dirt. It just gave me a, a real, frankly, it scared the life out of me and it made me so thankful that that did not happen to houses. 'Cause it, we could, we would've had the same problem. Anyways, we still need to get in and finish that. Um, county can't help haul us um riprap from Cedar until the fall. So we do have a bunch of riprap over here and um we need the county's help, we need the engineers' help with their trackhoe to do this. And so I'm working on that. Um, Public Works is gonna, is gonna have to help and do a lot of work on that too. And, and yet, summer's our busy time. You know, we need to be working on roads. And all of the construction that goes on, we're putting in services, we're fixing stuff, we're digging graves, we are um dealing with stuff at the sewer. We are, um, dealing with stuff at the sewer, um, lagoons. Uh, we are making progression. That's another one of my line items here. Uh, master plan is progressing on the sewer. We just found out from the state that they're gonna put a constraint on us for phosphorus. Um, they're gonna put that constraint on all sewer lagoons. It is going to be the new controlling factor for our sewer lagoons. What they're going to do is say, during the measuring period of phosphor, right now, whatever your phosphorus is, that's your cap, plus 25 percent. That's your cap. On what we let out of the sewer lagoons after it's gone through the sewer lagoons. So, um, we're looking at options, um, there as we try to figure out what our master plan is, including capital facilities planning for the sewer lagoons. Um, this is part of the discussion as we talk about Bryanhead's annexation or any other annexations or growth. This would be a, a major factor, but I think we might have a solution. We're working with that with Bowen and Collins. Uh, the bridge, we talked about the bridge, um, a while back. And, uh, the council gave direction to myself and staff to, um, to look, to really look at our options. Um, we've had some information that came, that came out. I don't wanna rehash the whole discussion. But, um, I don't think we really ever looked at 600 West. Also, there's some issues, there's some options at Main Street. The Main Street location that we were unaware of at the time, um, that, that now, I think some different type of bridges could, could be considered for that. That wouldn't be quite as impactful, um, on the, the area and the surrounding property owners. Tall, big, long bridges that would be a concern. Um, I think that there's some options there that we need to look at. However, I can't just go look at options with engineering companies. What I planned on doing was, um, we had, we had kind of talked in the meeting about maybe, um, getting, was it Jones and DeMille?
I think so.
Was that who did it originally?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would like to go back and, and engage them or another engineering company to say, um, would you come and, and look at some of these, some of these other options? Come up with a, with, with a proposal to us that we could consider in city council? We have money allocated for that project. Um, but, but I wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable just engaging them without bringing a proposal to the council to look at. But, um, there are, there is information and I do, I do not wanna let that die. I'd, I'd recently talked to the engineer that UDOT has assigned for this project and gave him an update. He's gonna be looking into some, some of his, um, resources. But ultimately, um, he thought it was a good idea to, to take a pause for a minute and look at some of these options. Um, so anyways, that's my plan was to actually bring a proposal to consider so that we could, we could spend a little bit of money, not a lot, but a little bit of money to make sure that we, we have good information and we have a good plan moving forward. Um, all we have is a vote to move it to 100 East, 100 West, and another vote to go ahead and put the brakes on and consider other options. That's where we stand. So, I don't wanna just let it sit there in limbo. I wanna move forward with it. And that's what I wanna do, is, is bring you some options to consider there. Um, recharge project, um, I, I talked to the Iron County Water Conservancy District about who they have used to design some of the, 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 um, structures that they have been doing to divert water for recharge. We need to move forward on that project. We have money in the budget for it this year to, to do that so that we can start recharging mu- um, water to the 300 East County pit. Um, we need the right engineering firm and these guys gave me a good recommendation. So, I was planning on reaching out to them and see if they're interested in it and have them bring a proposal so that they could look at drawing up some plans. Um, part of, and this all ties back into the bridge because one of the things that could affect the Main Street Bridge is if we change how and where and when we take the water out, that the farmers take the water out on 100 West, um, that sets our water elevation one block east where the bridge is. Um, one of the things I don't think we considered before, that now we're considering for a different reason, is moving that point of diversion, which sets that water level. If we could come up with an option as we do this recharge to move where they divert their water from up to the breakwater, we could probably improve their ability to sluice the water. Um, they're, they would love something better. Plus, if we recharge, we wanna use cleaner water anyways. If we can find a win-win with them, move that point of diversion, take out this structure on 100 West, it gives us more options. We could go deeper with a bridge and we could probably build a cheaper bridge. One of the things that made that option when we looked at the Main Street Bridge so expensive is that it had to be so high and long to get over a 100-year event. And since you couldn't go any deeper because the elevation was set by that diversion, that's what kind of dictated the bad options we had for Main Street Bridge. So, I'm not saying we're doing the Main Street Bridge at the Main Street. I'm saying, if we look at these options and we truly look at some, maybe there's some large box covert options that could be a, a fraction of the cost. We talked about maybe doing a low-water crossing. There's some options that, that we could consider that when we're not hampered by the depth, the floor level of the current creek, that it opens up a lot of options. None of that was known, so I think that we oughta at least consider those options in addition to considering 600 West. So, anyways, so I plan on looking at that and bringing you some options to consider, um, for an engineering firm to, to, we don't wanna go on a finance guy's recommendation. We wanna actually get actual engineers and look at that. But these are facts that, that we, that our actual engineers did not have the first time. So, anyways, I wanna keep moving that forward. Um, we'll get this pool done and we've got a million projects. So, I'm, I'm really antsy, not only for the, the, getting the pool open, all that good stuff. I gotta move on and that pool is, is absolutely taking all my time. Now, I know why you have general contractors. That all they do is coordinate because it is a lot of work. And what a cool experience, bub. Anyways, I'm done, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I had a call with, um, Cameron Deal of the League and Stephen Lizembe who works under the governor's office and the mayors in our area. It was really positive. It was, it's always great to hear. We're all going through the same things. Um, the hot topics in this order are water, housing and transportation. Um, there's a lot of struggle, uh, with those things in all of our cities around us. And hearing kind of the legislation and the things that are in the works, they're saying, please don't wait until legislative session to study these things. If you have an interest and concern, study them now, study them as they, um, are in process. And some of these we can get in front of and, and possibly not even have them go to legislative session. So, um, you know, it is an ongoing, organic, living, breathing thing that is a big part of our lives and does determine a lot of our destiny. So, we need to be paying attention to it as leaders in the community. Um, as far as the, uh, other updates there, they did allocate funding for kind of a, I'll just call them the floating professional, that could help with all of our smaller cities that have maybe some, some holes in staffing due to budget. And they are, we did have someone from five counties come and meet with us. He was very competent and, and had some great things to offer us. And they said that the, the go but, the go button's been pushed on that now so that we will have that opportunity to have some assistance with some things. I'm still pushing for AI to help us with, uh, codification because I don't, I'm still struggling with, uh, believing there's not a way to lay our code next to state code and highlight where we need to look at as opposed to this, you know, have to look at it all and try to figure it out ourselves. Especially when we have the League and all of the great minds that are there working for us. And so, um, talked a little bit about that, what that could look like. Um, there are still bills running around out there for BLM kind of land being used for, uh, maybe some lower-cost housing. A lot of it's, uh, is, you know, flopping, but a lot of it's still moving. That's, that's an interesting one for me just because, you know, we have these businesses, hotel, other things that need staff and we don't have a lot of places for anyone to live. Um, we're so, in this, talking the same language, the other cities have the exact same problems. And then that gets into public transportation, you know, and then it's, do we wanna go there? Because obviously, we need to pull from, uh, our communities for these employees. We already know employees that live here and in Cedar that work in Bryanhead and it's just gonna, the need's gonna grow. Um, as far as the, you know, other updates, the Vision Iron County stuff, we had a meeting this week and one of the things I realized in what we were talking about is we need to be sure that we're, our word and what we say we value. And so, if we say we're heritage and history, we need to be sure we have a budget line item to support historic architecture and structures. We need to be sure we have those things in place that support our value system. And, you know, we have all of these great, um, things that we, you know, stand, stand up for, but we do need to have funding to be able to find money to take care of these things. And the Old Rock Church is doing great with the fundraising efforts. The bricks are selling well. Um, it's, it's been a really positive experience to be part of that. And I, uh, know the Jesse and Smith families coming into town. Some of you may have met them. But they're going to be a group of about 500 that we'll be seeing before the next council meeting. Um, it should be interesting. I know we've interacted quite a bit. They've booked, uh, quite a few venues in our town for their stay here. And they're very excited to, to be in our community, but you'll notice, you'll notice a difference, I think, for those couple of days. Um, as far as the grants, I already sent this out to the council. Um, we didn't, we already knew we didn't get the, um, AARP, but I found out today, we also didn't get the T-Mobile. They were absolutely flooded with applicants. Um, the only saving grace I can say is we went through a, a pretty extensive process to write for those and they open up again and again and again. So, we just keep refining and we keep applying. But my, um, ask of you as a community is to, if you hear about or see grants or if you're at a project and you see a plaque and it says, "Thank you" to so-and-so, um, you know, send, send that information my way. I actually had an individual come up to me at the Old Rock Church days and he gave me four additional resources for grants for that project. So, it's something that, um, I'm a firm believer in, we don't have any money isn't the answer, it's the question. And we just need to figure out our priorities and how to take care of each other and our, and our assets. Um, as far as, you know, the only little plug, Dan covered a lot of what I was going to cover. Our active transportation plan is going really well. We're bringing UDOT in, in for a meeting next week, um, to really refine and look at that. We're looking at safe crossings specifically. And, you know, with a very strong focus on 200 and Main, Center and Main, uh, other areas that we've recognized are, are not safe and that we'd like to improve. So, I was grateful for the presentation tonight, saying that we could dovetail that in with our transportation plan because I think it's obviously all connected. Um, whatever modality, we need to get people around our community safely. Um, the last thing is just on the pool topic, just because of course, I'm not gonna leave that alone. Um, we had just, I, you know, I was at a meeting and, and someone was saying, we need to pull some people off the board and we need to put other people on the board because we need to give the opportunity and experience that's gained through these invaluable, irreplaceable experiences. Um, some of these are once in a lifetime. Um, I would say, other than, uh, the day Sam Halterman was brave enough to marry me and the birth of my children, as well as when we won our state soccer game in high school, uh, seeing kids in the pool, uh, was right up there. Um, and the experience gained through that, I've heard and I'm sure you have that, you know, that you felt it in your extremities and I don't wanna belittle that quote, but my, ours were so swollen into my hands, I didn't have wrists. And I'm pretty sure my, uh, complexion has changed. But I did feel, because of that opportunity, the feeling that was gained by those who chose to come out and participate and be there and go through that. And, um, it was like a, a team that was built that I think will never not be bonded together. And it included Public Works, it included city staff, it included numerous volunteers, business owners, individuals just showing up every day with what we needed. And for those people that were part of that, I guarantee you, they will never forget it. It really was something that, and I, I pushed back a little on it, it was just something that we could've just done. Uh, well, we could've just done this. This was not something that we could've just done a few years ago. This, this was the right people in the right time at the right place, giving it everything. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, lessen that with any negativity if that's possible for our community. It's way too big of a win to go negative with this. And it was wonderful to be a part of. I remember one day, since Sharon brought up Kim Skinner, he looked at me and he said, um, "You really believe in me, don't you?" And I said, "I absolutely believe in me, in you." And I remember the day that he came out and we had gotten the deep end sanded completely because of some people I mentioned at a previous, but also because I brought out the wingspan, which was Sam and Walker Halterman, who were long-legged and long-armed enough to get that deep end sanded. And Ken came out and he was just blown away. He had had a family obligation the day before and thought he was coming out to face that the next day. And he got there and it was just done. And he did a video recording to them that, I hope that I can pull together something for the 24th because there were just, I said it, there were well, well over 17 miracles. Um, but just to see just everything, the way it came together. So, you know, I, I guess that's my message on that. Um, anyone who saw Stephen, uh, Stephen's face at Ward when he jumped in the pool that night, it was absolute elation and he barely left our side. And I'm talking Saturdays and Sundays and, you know, there were just full commitment. Um, as my teenage kids say, full send. It was, we're gonna get this pool open July 4th and it was full send by so many people. And I am sad for the people that weren't there to feel that because it was incredible. Um, a movie could be made, but it probably won't be because it would be weird. But anyway, um, as far as the rest of the update, um, appreciating the movement with a lot of the things in our community, um, it, our town looks beautiful. People are happy and good things are happening every, every turn. I know we've still got things we need to iron out. We've got a lot of plans in process. I'd love to say the water sewer plan is almost done. I think that it's going in a great direction. Um, I do think these other plans, um, you know, having feasibility for power wrapped up, you know, it's, these things take a long time. And I think the more you put in, the more you get out. So, we wanna be sure that our output is worth what we pay for these. And so, some of them might seem like they take a while, but they're, the results are worth, uh, worth the input. Um, other than that, I'm grateful for those of you who stayed to the end of the evening. Do we have any comments or updates from administrative staff? Okay. So, with that, I'll entertain the final motion of the evening. Uh, we don't have a close this evening as far as I know. Um, unless any of the council have something they would like to discuss in closed session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you for all coming out.
Thank you.
Who said no? Was that Sam that said no? Did he yell no? Sam?
I don't know.
Somebody yelled no.
Might be silly.